I thought she was just trying to get rid of me.
We are, we, once again, live. Apologies for the technical difficulties. I suggest we allow the members of the public a few minutes to figure out, try to re-log back in.
Right. Is there, if we can't get out an immediate message to people through Zoom?
Uh, there, I don't know how, because they're not logged in. So I see people are, so we were at about fifty-two people. And I see people are, we're at thirty-two, so people are, are sticking with us, so let's give them a minute. Sorry, that was not a power outage, that was just Zoom flaking. So, and Phil is calling me, so excuse me.
Can't get in.
Zoom is not, not a civic ally.
No.
I know people can hear, hear that. Zoom. No one elected Zoom. Zoom doesn't volunteer for the borough.
We have fifty-two people again, so it looks like everyone's.
We're almost there, so we're at forty-three, so a lot of people figured out. So.
She has fifty-four to me.
Now, that's including you, Joe. I was, I was, you have to look at these only.
It's still climbing, so let's give it a couple of minutes.
That was a complete Zoom mystery. I'm gonna rename myself.
Yeah, that was a first.
That was an absolute first. Um, and then I'm going to make Joan the co-host, which is what I usually do in case of emergencies, but that didn't help me. Alright.
Okay, I made it back.
Okay, good. So we have all the council members, and we're at sixty-one.
So we're at fifty participants, so we're only shy a couple of, of people who were there before. I don't know.
We don't know who we're missing, so we can reach out to them, let them know we're back. Okay.
But anybody who's, who's listening can let any of their friends know to just try again.
Yeah. Oh, modern technology, it's just the best. Okay, so Elsie, you were in your, in the midst of your.
I, I go, okay, we need.
You were looking for this.
We need crossing guards.
Yes.
It was, the correction, it's really crossing guards.
Oh, I was wondering about that.
So we're in need of crossing guards, so if anyone knows, anyone who's interested, please reach out to Highland Park Police Department, because we, we need to get our, make sure everyone crosses the streets safely, especially our young people, our kids. So we need crossing guards, so go to Highland Park PD and, and get more information on that. I would also like to.
Do, do you know the hours that crossing guards, so people can make up their minds if they are available?
Hmm, I, I, no, I don't know, because I want to say, I think it's from seven to whatever, but it's, it's this, it's a break-in schedule, it's not like a seven to three or something. Because you have to be there when the kids are out in the morning, when they come back in the afternoon, so the schedule is, so like a flexible kind of schedule.
Okay.
So I really don't know what it is. The PD would definitely have that information available. Um, I would also like to thank Office of Emergency Management for the tireless work that they did during the storm, and the rescues that they made, and the, the housing that they tried to find for folks, and, you know, all the work that the entire team of Emergency Management, along with Jim Polos, that he put together, pulled together a really good team, from cert on down, to make sure that during the storm that people were taken care of, who were displaced, they had a place to go, then they had a warm, safe place to be in. So thank you to all the, the emergency staff and public safety that came out to keep folks just as safe. And also, we just want to take a moment to say that this past September eleventh, that we had a memorial, a member and service at the community center. We had a good showing of people that came out, and it's a difficult thing, it's twenty years, and it seemed like twenty years just went by, just like that, but we haven't particularly described in its remembrance, so thank you for all that came out, all who came out. On a lighter note, Zone Six, Zone Six has been doing some really, really good things. They've put together a Zone Six Girl Program, and they are part of a group called the Flawless Performance. So Flawless was out, and they were doing their thing, and they got acknowledged in a program that they participated in that called Twenty-four Hours of Peace. And I'm happy to say that Zone Six came out, they represented, they represented Highland Park well. And I would also like to take a moment to thank all the families that came out to be coaches and help to support the Zone Six program that's going on, because there's constant influx of families coming to help you out in whatever way possible. So thank you all who constantly show support for Zone Six and encourage our young people to get them to where they, they're in the Flawless competition, and they're doing really good. And Zone Six continues to do a, a, Yomann's job, they continue to do a wonderful job over there, thanks to Ashton Burrell and his leadership, so. Thank you all for all the support, continue to support the Zone Six program, and that's my report.
And, and Elsie, I think they just celebrated their third year in an operation at Zone Six, right?
Yes, 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 yes. They're doing some phenomenal stuff over there.
They really are. Okay, um, thank you, Councilwoman Foster. Um, Council President Phil George, do you have a report? Uh, unmute yourself, Phil.
I apologize, I'm still trying to get it straightened out from the, from when we broke contact, I apologize. Yeah, uh, yeah, I have a brief report, Mayor. First of all, our hopes for those who suffered significant damage in Idaho, that they overcome those trials quickly, and thank you to the first responders, and also Public Works, who's been working hard, who took the risks and put up with the storm while we all sought shelter. Uh, with regard to Public Works, DPW, as you know, is working on the removal of storm damage items. The dumpster at DPW was filled up right away, we started pickups on Monday morning. They've been working on the north side yesterday and today, the, um, it was not finished, so they will be back on the north side tomorrow uh, to finish the north side up, and then start on the south side, um, north side up. I think they've also wrapped the triangle into that. The problem is that there are so many towns who, who are doing exactly the same thing. If you've driven around Middlesex County, you know that it could, we can load a truck in maybe an hour, and we'll sit in line for two hours waiting, so that is why the pro, it programs going a little bit slower. But we're going to hit the entire town, as you know, recycling is canceled this week in order to allow us to have the crews and trucks to work on post-Ida cleanup. Um, you've probably seen the tree trimming going on along Raritan Avenue, Woodbridge, by the New Jersey Tree Society, they're completing that work, uh, working with, uh, being, uh, working with STACK under our contract, and our DPW said that they were satisfied with the progress so far today. I was out looking for a while, just to watch, see, and listen to comments. Um, Councilman Hirsch has mentioned the Windows Walk, uh, it's been going on for a number of years, this is actually one of the biggest participations. I think in, in large part, we suffered last year, not only with personal emergencies and personal stories, but a lack of art and other things going on in town. Um, but to try and join in on that, the Environmental Center, which has been closed to the public since the beginning of the pandemic, um, cooperated with the Artists Collective for a walk-by exhibit as well. Local artists have displayed in the windows, and you can view their art even though the center is closed. Um, both the Environmental Commission, Sustainable Highland Park, and members of council have been interested in electric vehicles and accommodating electrical vehicles in town for a long time. But the state in July enacted a statute requiring the Department of Community Affairs to adopt a model ordinance. That ordinance came out, it's now official. Um, we'll be working with the Borough Attorney to put that in the proper format, but it is actually a lot of rules for future development, uh, site plans for residential as well as commercial uh, projects will be required to comply with being ready for electric vehicles. Um, and I think it's a very major step, was actually a project that Environmental Commission was going to work on, but here it is, and, and it's done already. And finally, STACK has recommended that the borough study the tree planting program for 2022 for possible changes or adjustments, and the Public Works Committee will be taking that up at the next meeting. Um, and we look forward to, uh, using some of their suggestions, uh, as well as the, uh, suggestion from DPW and the administration with our tree planting program. Thank you, Mayor, that's all.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, I'll try to keep it brief. Um, we, I just got word this week, I know residents have, are putting up and being very patient with the condition of our roads, and partly due to the gas line replacement program that's underway with PSC and G, but I just got word that one, two, three, four, five, six of our roads, some of the earlier ones that they worked on are going to be milled and paved starting next week, or at least, I guess, the milling date's the twenty-first, with paving falling either on the twenty-fourth or the twenty-seventh. So keep an eye out for no parking signs. Uh, we're talking about Crow's Road, South Tenth, Aurora, South Eleventh, and Inza, those of you who live in those areas and are aware of the roadwork, uh, the disturbances, just keep an eye out for the notifications for when the milling will begin. Uh, so I know that's good, and this, just let me assure everyone elsewhere that the, the rest of the restoration is coming, they just have to wait until all the service connections are complete to the new gas mains before they can do that. So I just wanted to make, I know it's, it's, it's a lot to deal with, and, um, we're all getting tired of it, but there's an end in sight, so I just wanted to mention that. On a more positive note, we are going to be finally kicking off implementation of both our 2016 and 2018 Safe Roots to Stool um, grant programs. These are ADA accessible, primarily curb ramps around neighborhoods near our schools throughout town. Uh, so this is exciting, we've been working on this, this was something that Suzie Welkowitz, with the help of SWAC, uh, really got underway, so we're, we're finally getting to a point where we're, we're looking at, at implementation, there's just been a lot of uh, bureaucratic, uh, you know, hurdles to just figure out, but I think we're there. So that's something exciting, and hopefully we'll be seeing some of that. Uh, it's going to take a little while to implement, but at least we're going to, we'll be reaching out to the neighbors where these areas are going to be impacted and, and get that moving. So that's coming, and I just wanted to remind folks, uh, about some of the resources, I know you mentioned it, Mayor, in your report, but those who are still uh, in the recovery mode from the storm, uh, if you, hopefully you've already filed with your insurance company, if you have damages, and then also filed with FEMA, uh, the website is disasterassistance.gov, and there's an eight-hundred number, one-eight-hundred-six-two-one-three-three-six-two. If that's confusing, and I can imagine it might be, I've looked at the forums myself, there's also a disaster recovery center with FEMA over at the Middlesex County Fire Academy, it's open seven days a week, uh, Monday through Friday, seven to seven PM, and Saturday and Sunday from eight to four, and you can walk in and just ask your questions, but be advised, if you're comfortable with online, you, you can do everything you want at the disasterassistance.gov, but if you have questions or you need some help navigating, there are representatives of FEMA there during those hours, and I would encourage you to take advantage of that. Um, and everybody else, cover all my other things, I will call it quits there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Borough Administrator. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're about to go into our first public participation session, it's twenty-one minutes in total. Three minutes for each speaker, limited to items on this agenda, including the work session. I'm going to ask that folks that may want to ask questions about the redevelopment plan, I know quite a few folks said they were going to come to the meeting to talk about it. I'm going to ask that you hold those questions and comments until we have our hearing on the redevelopment plan, because we, we do have a separate hearing, an open discussion, open public discussion at that hearing later on in this evening before we vote. Um, and that's just so, if anyone has any questions on agenda items other than that, um, they will have time to speak. So, um, before we go in here, uh, just so you know, the Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when the, there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. And as a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad, or select the raise hand button on the Zoom application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name, the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first name and last name, as well as your address. Again, I'm going to ask that this be, uh, this part of the open public comment session be limited to anything on the agenda, and those of you with questions or comments on redevelopment, please hold those to the public hearing on that matter. Again, if you'd like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or raise your hand button now. Okay, Borough Administrator, if you could just announce our first speaker, if there is one.
Sure, I'm just, for the record, we are at sixty-five attendees and four hands. Uh, first up is Carl Prey. Yeah.
Am I muted?
Nope.
Nope. Um, I, actually, I'm a little bit talking about the master plan, but I'm also talking about the flooding in Highland Park. And I'm going to just start with the thing about the master plan, as I've said often since October twentieth, first, when I first learned about your redevelopment plan, I think it's the wrong plan for Highland Park. It's inconsistent with the development with December two thousand nineteen master plan, because it would allow more massive buildings, parking garage, and will close South Third Street to accommodate the farmer's market. None of those things were included in the master plan that you enacted a year ago. The massive flooding that occurred in Highland Park as a result of Hurricane Ida should make you rethink what you are proposing. Highland Park's infrastructure is clearly insufficient for what we already have, not, let alone what you plan to build. Those of us with flooded basements and damaged first floors can vouch for that. You told us to clean our gutters in your public service announcement and divert water away from our houses. Isn't that simply blaming the victim? If we got flooded, does that mean we caused our own flooding? Not the borough's insufficient sewer systems. In August, you hired a company that builds parking garages to do a parking management plan, then you rescinded the contract and are now hiring a different company. You're buying a house on South Third tonight for nearly five hundred thousand, and what is the purpose of that? You're hiring another company to help figure out how to close South Third permanently, but you've now placed eleven concrete barriers in front of Pinots and Mortis, a North Fourth, which will require a forklift to move them. Is that the first step in also closing that street permanently? A few people who listen to these meetings are really ecstatic about your plan. I would say many more are unhappy, but the majority of people have no idea what you are planning and what your vision of the future is, and I think most of them really don't care. Um, but as you said, the six million dollars in bonds, which you are already starting to spend with the five hundred thousand dollars for the house on, on, um, South Third, that you've given your house, I hope you realize that when this development plan goes sour, you will remember it as the people who blew our tax rate, on people whose taxes are already high through the roof. And, um, and part of that will come from the pilot payments that, um, you will be negotiating for all of the new development that will not be supporting the schools, but will be supporting the borough. Um, thank you.
Okay, um, who is next?
Looks like David Hughes is next. Just David.
Thank you very much, David Hughes, three thirty, South Third Avenue. I really just have a point of order question, which I need answered before I speak, if I do, um, later on, regarding the redevelopment plan. This is the first council meeting I've attended since March third. Uh, back then, you passed a resolution describing people such as myself, who care a great deal about the rights of Palestinians, describing us as anti-Semitic, and, to quote the phrase, describing our views and actions as contrary to the essential values of government, under which this council performs its obligations to the public. So I just want to know, since I'm in this category of being contrary to your essential values, am I still permitted to speak at this meeting, and will you listen to what I have to say?
Uh, so David, you know, you are a resident of Highland Park, I don't particularly care what your political views are on the Middle East. Um, you, you of course have every right to speak at any of our meetings.
All right, thank you very much, I'll be addressing you later.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like Peter Spohl is up next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm Peter Spohl, I live at one forty-six Graham Street on the south side. Actually, today I have a question about the list of prospective purchases on page thirteen of the, um, agenda. Um, it, um, it includes something called a, a police utility interceptor. I had no idea what that was. When I looked online, there's a thing manufactured by Ford called the Police Interceptor Utility, but that lists, the, the manufacturer suggested list price for that is forty-one thousand dollars. So I don't understand the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar lease price for this, uh, this thing, unless it's something completely different. What is it?
Okay, I'm going to ask, um, Councilwoman Foster, or the police chief, if he's on the, uh, call to, to address this, Councilwoman? Can't hear you. Elsie, you need to unmute.
I believe.
Elsie?
Can I answer the question?
By your means?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry. No, I was saying that because the, this is a, a police matter, it's under the chief's review, I wanted the chief was to answer, but Terry, you have answers too?
I, I, it's, it's multiple vehicles, I mean, I can swear to you if it's two or three, and it also includes all of the upfitting, including the lights, sirens, which can all, can be easily twenty-five thousand dollars a vehicle. So I believe it's three, but Chief, maybe you could, it's been a while since I, I read it, it should have quantities there. Um, we have a lot of older, if you've seen them around, in our off-duty vehicles that we're trying to, uh, get, that are gas guzzlers slash emitters that we're trying to, and I believe also a hybrid.
And is, is the lease to, because of cash flow, so you don't have to pay for it all the time?
It's a special program that the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, we avail ourselves of it pretty much every other year for, all the last several years, to fund our, our, our vehicle improvements, we budget for it.
Okay, and, um, this, this list appears twice in two different, um, resolutions, is, is it?
Thirty seconds.
Why?
Um, I, I, well, one is the loan program, and one is the lease program.
Okay.
And so I think we just need the same exhibit in both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Terry, is there another hand? I think you said there were four.
Uh, yes, and we're, we have two more hands, and I took a note of when we, we, we still have time. Uh, next up is Anna Haley. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Anna Haley, uh, one-three-five North Fifth Avenue. This is just a note of praise and appreciation. I mean, I thoughts about the development plan, also actually positive, I'll defer those to the hearing. I wanted to express one appreciation for the Zoom, the continued Zoom meetings, it makes the democracy of our community even more accessible, and having us all on Zoom together, awesome, thank you guys very much for that. Um, I also wanted to express my appreciation for the town, borough's, um, COVID testing. Um, it is incredibly efficient, well-run, and, and like miraculously fast. I have a kid going to college in Canada now, and it's imperative that we have access to very reliably quick testing, and that was wonderful. Um, moving him back into school in Montreal last week, or two weeks ago. And then the last thing is just the, the tremendous responsiveness of the community to, and, and the, the borough government to the storm. I'm sure I have no sense of the extent of the responsiveness, but at least as a citizen whose basement flooded, who had a medium level of, uh, junk to pull out, it wasn't as bad, some worse than others, whatever. Um, you know, I expressed concern about that on the Facebook, one of the Facebook groups, um, I reached out to, uh, the mayor and the two council maps, and honestly, you guys were phenomenal, I'm sure you got completely slammed by people very concerned about all this, and your response to the bulk trash issue and getting that taken care of this week was tremendous. So I really, it's important to say when things are going well, and I, in, in all of those regards, thank you, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Anna. We can do so much when we work together on things, so, so I appreciate the comments and, and also alerting us to some of the issues you were facing. Thank you. Okay, Terry, is there one more?
Uh, last, our next, I guess last hand at this point is Rob Roswellitz, and I know I probably got the last name wrong.
Hey, good evening, Robert Savage from, uh, one-two-three Magnolia Street, and I, I wanted to follow up on a previous comment, and I was trying to understand why the town is considering the purchase of twenty-three South Third Avenue, and, you know, what the intent of that kind of purchase is, uh, you know, looking at the approximate house value, five hundred thousand dollars, and how, you know, the, thinking of how the town could use that money in different ways, uh, between the school district, uh, testing, uh, any other purpose right now, and I'm just trying to understand why the town is spending it to, uh, purchase the residents in town. Thank you.
Okay, so, so Rob, um, I'm happy to, uh, address that answer, and Councilman Hale, you can certainly chime in afterwards. Um, so this goes back, um, two decades, uh, when the town was first trying to make, um, Highland Park more, um, pedestrian-safe and, uh, foot, and, and bicycle-safe for, for our pedestrians, but also to make it safer walking on Raritan Avenue. Uh, back then, uh, the council at the time wanted to connect the parking lots, and Elsie, you may have been on the council back then. They wanted to connect, okay, great, they wanted to connect the parking lots behind Raritan Avenue so that cars would not be going in and out of lots along Raritan, along Raritan. Um, and, um, there was, the, the plan was supposed to move ahead, and there was a, uh, a discussion at, uh, the planning board, um, and the house that we are currently purchasing, which was, um, right next to the parking lots, and, and certainly a critical piece to making this happen in a safe manner. Um, uh, the, the owners there were not, um, they objected to the plan, and, and so the plan just sort of died on the vine back then. Um, now we have the opportunity to actually make our streets safer by connecting our parking lots and using that piece of property to better the public space that we currently have, and hopefully will have in the future. Um, but by, um, having that piece of property adjacent.
Thirty seconds.
So I hope that answers your question, Rob.
Answers the question, but I'm just, uh, I would say that I think those funds could be better spent purchasing properties on the main street, rather than trying to address something that, uh, wasn't able to be done, uh, ten to twenty years ago. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's okay, you know, we do feel that public safety is extremely important, and that's the priority here. Okay, uh, any other, um, hands, Terry?
Um, Mayor, not at this time.
Okay, then we're going to move on to, um, the, the meat and potatoes of our meeting, our resolutions and ordinances. Um, just want to make sure I have everything here. Just bear with me one second. Okay, we're going to start with ordinances requiring a second reading. Um, Clerk, can you please report on advertising the lease ordinance for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program? for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the MCI for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease and agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2021 of the MCI, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit is a publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion?
Okay, any public hearing?
Can, may I, may I just, if you're interested in commenting on this ordinance, you should please raise your hand now, and we'll call on you, star nine, star nine?
Yes, star nine.
After all this time, or the raise function? I'll assume if you, our hand is raised, you have a comment on this topic. Okay. Looks like Jennifer Chapman. Please state your name and address for the record. Jenny, are you interested in commenting on this topic? All right, I'm going to move on. All righty. And I'd ask, for those of you in the audience, I, I know some are eager to speak on other topics, but we have a couple of public hearings for these different ordinances. So, you know, please wait until you hear the matter that you're interested in.
Only public comment on?
Regarding the lease ordinance. Sorry about that. Okay, next up is David Hughes. David, would you like to speak on?
Wait, I'm sorry. Is this, is this the ordinance about the redevelopment?
No, we, we have two matters before we get to that.
All right, sorry.
Okay, please, everyone, we have a format, a legal format we have to follow here. I just had the clerk read off the ordinance regarding the improvement and financing program of the MCI and capital equipment. There was a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading. Then I have to open this to public comment. Only this. Okay?
No hands.
No hands. Thank you. All right then, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay. Now, this is another ordinance that has to do with capital equipment and improvement. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the loan ordinance for the capital improvement, equipment and improvement and financing program of the MCI for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Loan ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a loan and security agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority for the undertaking of various 2021 capital improvements and the acquisition and installation, as applicable, of various equipment with an estimated cost of $215,000. The cost of such improvements and equipment to be financed through the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2021 of the MCI, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit is a publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, now we're going to have a public hearing only on the loan ordinance for capital equipment and improvement of, and improvement in financing program of the MCI. Does, is there any public comment for this hearing?
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. In my, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, now this is the ordinance everyone's been waiting for. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through D for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, authorizing the adoption of the downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through D pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 40A:12A-1 at Sec. was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit is a publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Don't move.
Okay, now, we can begin the public hearing. I'm going to ask anyone who, who would like to speak to this ordinance to raise their hand, and the Borough Administrator will call on you to speak. Terry?
Okay, and just, since there's a lot of interest in this one, we're at 64 attendees and 10 hands raised at this point. Looks like first person up is Daniel Stern Cardinal.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. You've all heard my detailed thoughts on this before, so I'll keep it brief. This redevelopment plan incorporates the best practices for towns like Highland Park. It's well-thought-out. It has tons of input and feedback from the community throughout the process, going all the way back to 2019. And it's exactly the kind of framework that would be a really positive development for Highland Park. And there's one more thing that I, I just today decided I wanted to say, because in the mail earlier today, I got an offer to buy my house in cash, no commission, et cetera. This only happens when there's a severe housing shortage. People want to live in Highland Park, and that's a good thing. We should welcome with open arms anybody who wants to move here. And Highland Park should be affordable to anyone who wants to move here. This plan will help address the housing shortage and affordability crisis. So I want to thank everyone who's been involved in this process so far, and in particular, everyone here who voted in favor of this plan last month. So let's get it passed tonight, and then we can get to the hard part, the fun part, of actually getting the developments done on each site. So please vote, please vote in favor of this plan again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next.
All right, looks like Alexis Thomason is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm Alexis Thomason. I'm at 155 Exeter Street. I am the author of the petition that was sent to the council folks and to the mayor. And thank you for reading that. I hope that you have. But I'd like to read it so that it's in the public record. "We, the undersigned residents and workers of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim that it is our wish to see a continued public ownership of the property dubbed Track C, as per our Towns Redevelopment Agency, and herein dubbed the farmers' market and adjacent areas for the sake of this petition. We, the undersigned, believe that this public area has historically and is currently having a positive impact on our economically and culturally diverse town by, one, being the location of a farmers' market whereby the town has increased access to fresh produce and locally manufactured goods; two, by creating a literal and figurative town square at which the communities within our community can come together at a central and accessible location and share ideas and information; and, three, by being a town cultural center at which we may engage with the arts, be part of a wellness program, eat outdoors safely, or just meet with friends. We, the undersigned, are of the belief that the farmers' market and adjacent areas are vital, should be improved upon, and should be held in perpetuity as a town public space. It is our wish to explore more beautification, more inclusion, and more sustainable design. It is not our wish to lose our public space. As of this moment, this petition has gained over 300 signatures of residents, sellers, workers in Highland Park, and regular attendees of the market. We do not believe that you should give up the public space. And we also, I personally believe, and the reason why I created this petition is because I've been following this redevelopment plan and I've been reading it. And the areas of South Third and Track C in your proposal, the way you treat them in the proposal is extremely ambiguous. You're writing yourselves an open check to do whatever you want to do. And we want to see this area remain public, or we want to see specific details about what will remain public. Because just saying we'll have a pavilion or we'll have a public space
Thirty seconds.
is not enough. Thank you very much."
Okay, thank you. And who is next?
One second. Next up is Jennifer Chapman. State your name and address, please.
Hi, Jenny Chapman, 123 Magnolia Street. And sorry about my overeager hand raising before. I'm always one to sit at the front of the class. So I just want to make sure that I, that you understand I'm speaking as a private resident, not as a member of any group or organization. And as you know, I talk to a lot of people in town, including about the proposed privatization of our publicly-owned and publicly-used space in the downtown, we commonly call the market lots, on the plan, referred to as Track C. Here are some of the things that some of the people have said to me that have stuck with me. A local resident who also owns commercial properties in the downtown said, "The market lots and all of the stuff that goes on there is a downtown amenity. It's an attraction. Once you sell those public lots, we will never get that space back." Another local resident who was a realtor said, "I sell homes to people who move here in part because they love that Highland Park has the markets and movies and everything. Why would we risk messing with what works?" A market vendor said, "This is one of the best markets in the state. Definitely the best one in the area. I don't understand why your government would try to squeeze it down a side street." A local pastor said, "Are they aware that all of this stuff works here because of where it is? The church orgs, the businesses nearby, the residents nearby, Main Street, the pavilion. It all works together." And finally, a local urban planner said, "It will take years for the market and everything to recover from a move like this. Have they done a cost comparison between rebuilding an entire town square somewhere else versus beautifying a space we already own?" And in my own words, I would like to remind council that the currently publicly-owned space works now and is only improved in its functionality and use by the public. There's a sizable list of events that go on at Track C that would be displaced and would have to recover that displacement. The addition of the Wolkovitz Pavilion has sparked the imaginations of local artists, business owners, and residents. It's used for scheduled and spontaneous activity throughout the week. Dispersing or separating out all of this core activity to different spaces would be detrimental to the downtown and a slap in the face of the residents who've come to enjoy the possibility this space enables. Public spaces like this are open to all, embrace inclusivity, and foster community. A privately-owned space, like the suggested courtyard, is not inclusive. It does not welcome everyone, and it is not.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. It's not open to all. Every councilperson who votes to privatize Highland Park's downtown public space will have this as their legacy. If the proposed displacement goes through, and we're struggling to bring life back to the markets and all of the other activities that have happened successfully in Track C, we'll have those members of council in mind. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next.
Looks like Alvin Chin is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Alvin Chin, and I live at 31 South Third. That's two doors down from the municipal parking lot. That's at question in one of the proposals. I've been a bit irritated by people who, who've claimed, both online and like in, in public meetings, that residents of South Third or other areas that are like near, near-proposed projects are opposed to making, like, for example, a closed road in the town tables permanent. In fact, one of the reasons that my family decided to live in Highland Park on this block, on this street, in this house, was because it's of its location and how walkable community closed to downtown. And I'm in favor of the boroughs taking action to improve that part of South Third to turn it into a permanent pedestrian space. In the past, I would see cars racing to, to beat the light at South Third and 27. And that didn't feel like it was safe. And I appreciate what was mentioned earlier about pedestrian safety at that area. So the proposal to acquire the lot at 23rd South Third and connect it to the right-hand parking lot seems like it would address some of the concerns about the size of the farmers' market space. But as Randall Solomon has mentioned online, like, there needs to be some sort of, like, commitment to improving any future site for the farmers' market and the rest of Main Street. And again, acquiring this property is a step in the right direction, but there's a, there's a way to go. And I'm not saying that, that you're not doing that. I'm just saying there's still more work to do. So like, once there is a plan, I'm expecting the council and the borough to put up for the investment, the effort, to, and to support Main Street Highland Park, to improve the town tables area, to adequately screen public from private spaces, and to do, do mitigation on traffic impacts. But again, we're not at that stage of planning yet. There are very few right now in, in the town. There are few viable opportunities for redevelopment that would concentrate density of residential units. So I think this plan, as it stands, is, is the best thing we can do right now, short of, I guess, forcing a sale from some of our more popular large landlords in, in the borough. I, I think people that sometimes fail to realize that a lot of the vacant storefronts
Thirty seconds.
are in the hands of people who have no interest in participating in redevelopment. And there's a lot of misunderstanding about redevelopment, saying that it's going to kill the farmers' market. The farmers' market may move, but if we take the steps to, that the new place is going to be okay, then we will be able to reduce the impact to the farmers' market and Main Street Highland Park. And I again say that we should do redevelopment rather than do nothing because we don't have a great property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. Okay, who's next?
Anna Haley is up next. State your name and address for the record again.
Hello, I'm Anna Haley again, 135 North Fifth Avenue. I think this, I'm really excited by this plan, and I feel confident that there's a, having read the whole ninety-some odd pages of it. I, I don't know that I follow all of the detail, but it seems very clear there's a deep commitment and a very studied one to maintaining public and community spaces, and that the farmers' markets, the evening movies, other kinds of community activities will be maintained, if not of the same space. I, for one, while I deeply, deeply appreciate my fellow community member's intense commitment to the farmers' market, I do not share the sense that the current location is a viable quote-unquote town square. That kind of makes me rinse, to be quite honest. I think it's, we have, having gone by it, driven by it, I, I don't find it particularly accessible, certainly not by car, not that we should, you know, or organize like by cars at this point, with given climate change, but I think that we can do better. And I think that there are all kinds of ways to do better that this plan illuminates. I would say, because of the extensive pushback that should be taken as, very patiently, as a signal that even more communication and engagement and input-getting is needed. And it's annoying. Democratic radical planning in communities requires it. It is not efficient. But the pushback is, should signal that there needs to be even another round of that, where there can be clarification that these community spaces are vital and committed to, and get the, the town's greater input on how to do this. I am particularly excited, though not totally clear, about doing this on Track D. I love the Page Eight drawing in the plan where there's a combination of townhouses and parking structure and presumed community space. It immediately reminds me of what, what Princeton has with the library and the parking structure and the plaza. And I, it's not clear to me that that actually is the intent. It seems like maybe there's other spaces that are designated, but I think we have a really exciting potential to make that lighted giant parking area be something that looks very attractive for the residents on Dennison. that centralizes parking, even including like a park and ride thing if the shuttle goes through with folks that work at Rutgers. I I I I think it could be incredible. I'm so in
Thirty seconds.
But I would really encourage you guys to take a deep breath and patience. I know that I have myself strained your patience on numerous occasions when I talk in these meetings. Um, but I think that it's imperative to engage the community again around let's talk about our public space here and how to make this work the best for everybody. Thank you very much for all of your hard work with this.
Thank you, Anna. Some good I I suggestions there.
Next up, I see Randall Solomon. Please state your name and address.
Randy Solomon, three thirty-one Felton Avenue. Um, hi, everyone. Thanks uh for, you know, persevering on this. Uh, a few points I would like to make. One, for those who don't already know, uh, you know, I'm very much in support of redevelopment in Highland Park. Across New Jersey are seeing a boom and a renaissance. Somerville and the Touchin and Princeton and on and on and on. And they've done it through redevelopment. And unfortunately, Highland Park has been behind the curve in getting on the redevelopment train. Uh, we haven't been able to get it together and get it organized, although we've talked about it for about twenty years. Um, but it, you know, it does a lot of things, including um ultimately lowering taxes, lowering greenhouse gas emissions, uh creating a better quality of life, creating a safer pedestrian experience, creating a place where people are more neighborly because they see each other when they're walking around. More places to shop, just better all around. It raises property values. It's 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 all good and it's not, even though it hasn't happened in Highland Park, um, it's not a mystery. And I note that um, you know, the our professionals, uh Jim Constantine and Joe Baumann have been involved in a lot of those successful redevelopments. And so you made some really good choices for the team. Um, I do want to say that uh, you know, I am concerned that we make sure that way, that if we are to build something or allow a developer to build something on the farmer's market lot and sell that to them, that we have a commitment that we're going to have something um in on a new site that's better. Um, you know, and I agree with uh the previous speaker who said like, that's not really a town square. And I also agree to a certain extent with Jenny Chapman and others who said, you know, what's been proposed or what people have seen so far is not adequate. We need something better, like we need a town square that we're going to be proud of in a hundred years. Um, and you need to sort of buck up and say it's going to happen and make it happen. Um, and and sort of not chintz out on that. Um, and and not be scared of, you know, some people who are going to yell at you. Um, and on that topic, you know, I just want to say, you know, stay strong. I, you know, people know on my day job, I give advice to municipalities around New Jersey on similar stuff to this. Um, and, you know, I I had a front row seat to watch the mayor of Princeton. Um, um, tried to take a parking lot in in downtown Princeton that was kind of an eyesore and turned it into what is now like the most amazing plaza and library and apartments and restaurants that everybody who hated it now loves.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, it was amazing because, you know, of course it's Princeton. So you're saying like the smartest, most articulate people in the world defend this parking lot saying the most inane things. And um, you know, the, you just have to, you just have to weather it. And and I'm not saying that the people who are defending the farmer's market are saying inane things at all. Because what they're saying is they want it, they want proof that there's going to be something, something as good or better in the new spot, and you haven't showed that proof yet. And that's it. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, any more hands?
Yes, we have fourteen hands raised and just so you're aware, it's uh eight twenty-three. So then, um, just checking in with you on that. Next up, Grasina Strollia. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Grasina Strollia. I live at twenty-four Red Cliff Avenue, apartment two C. Um, it's my first time speaking to you guys, so I'm very nervous. I apologize. Um, as a member of the uh Town Historic Committee, I just want to put in a little note that we should be careful in all of our redevelopment, and I am for redevelopment, um, that we keep and incorporate those structures that are historically interesting so that we are not a cookie cutter of someplace else that we maintain our history as well as building new and 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 sustainable, um, you know, and useful around it. Second, as a board member of the Highland Park uh Community Chorus, I can tell you that the Track C is not just an open space. It's very, it it's, the events that happen there have sprung up out of its specific location in particular, two things, uh, public restrooms um, and the fact that the Reformed Church acts as a sort of second uh community center. We perform, we rehearse and perform in the in the uh Reformed Church. And we rely on that parking lot. A lot of our members are older and while they don't have handicap, you know, stickers, they can't walk too far. And uh, we are concerned um that that losing that unique space is is going to impact uh where and how we can have concerts. Um, so if you're going to replace the farmer's market, and I'm not stuck on that parking lot must be the town square, but we need a space that not only is as large but has access to public restrooms, has a large performance space or meeting space immediately adjacent to it um, and is on Raritan Avenue so that even if people do not participate in the town events, they feel the community, which is what makes someone proud to live in Highland Park, is that they see all the things that are going on. Um, so that's, that's my uh, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Grasina.
Thank you.
Uh, it looks like Elina Chisik is up next. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, hi. Actually, it's Dimitri Chisik, uh four twenty-one Cedar. No, you didn't make a mistake on on my wife's uh island. Yeah, uh, yeah. Thanks for giving me a chance uh to to speak. I have to say, I'm surprised that it sounds like the traffic study for the Third Avenue in particular will be done uh after the decision is made to close it up. That's what it sounded like. And uh, the to me, I would expect that blocking an avenue would simply reroute cars to somewhere else. They'll be racing somewhere else uh with the greenhouse emissions and all that. But the concrete question I have is uh, should the traffic study show a a lot of damage to the traffic flow, worsening it? Uh, would that alter your decision on closing the Third Avenue?
So do we, Terry or Jim Constantine?
I I wanted to answer one point, not his question, but I wanted to clarify a point and all that. Yeah, I I just want to make sure. The traffic study that we're doing with respect to South Third is one that the New Jersey DOT has asked us to do as part of our permit application to close it. And they are interested in, just to be real clear, they are more interested in um impacts on Route twenty-seven at these second and fourth avenue intersections. And we have to have professional guys experienced in doing that analysis that they that speaks their language uh do that analysis for them. So I just want to be clear that we're not studying every side street, but I think we have a very good baseline in that the road has been closed for a considerable period. I don't have the exact time period on my tip of my tongue. But I just wanted to clarify because I know there have been different understandings of what that scope for that particular approval is. And with that, I'll step back and phase two of that question is not mine to answer.
Okay, thank you for explaining that, Terry. That was important. Um, Jim, did you want to address um the the second part of the question or do you want it uh repeated?
Um, I think I can add that the the plan calls for exploring um potentially South Third, but is not included in it. So at this point, there is more work to be done, including the traffic study. Before you can move.
I see, I see. Okay, uh, thank you. I hope there'll be more.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Jim Nichols is next. Please state your name and address to confirm it's in fact you.
Yes, it's me, Nichols. I'm the president of Main Street Highland Park. Um, and I, what I can say is, as you know, we've been working hard with the borough on this since December. We, it has been suggested that our message has not been clear. So one of the things we've accomplished in nine months of effort is to reduce our position to five bullet points, which I want to share with you now. Um, point one is we are pro redevelopment. We want redevelopment done right and have worked to provide input on all aspects of the redevelopment plan. There are several long blighted and long vacant sites, which are a drag on our downtown and urgently need to be redeveloped. Two, we have real concerns about the proposed full buildout of Track C, the site of our highly successful farmer's market, live downtown events, including arts and crafts, holiday celebrations, outdoor movies, live theater and music, and many other activities. The site, the site also houses the Wolkovitz Pavilion and heavily used outdoor seating areas adjacent to it. During the COVID period, these outdoor events and outdoor spaces have been critical and the community support for them has only grown during this time. We believe that the continued success and growth of the downtown activities are crucial to the ongoing economic recovery of downtown and to the success of the redevelopment effort itself. And as a side point, I just want to suggest that anyone who thinks that redevelopment is automatically going to achieve nirvana should take a visit to the Matouchen Farmer's Market on a Saturday morning. And you can see what we do not want to happen to our farmer's market as a result of redevelopment. So this is a serious proposition and I urge everyone to check that out. Cause, because there's no guarantee that for success. And like I said, we want this project done right. Point three, we've worked hard to collaborate with the borough to show possibilities for public space in a number of alternate downtown locations for the farmer's market and the rest of the borough's square downtown activities, now housed at the Wolkovitz Pavilion. Four, none of these alternative options is ideal. They'll present challenges to current downtown activities and their potential for growth, consequently present challenges to the validity, vitality of Raritan Avenue and existing and future businesses. Five, and most important, we believe, and this is an if and proposition, we believe for these reasons that Track C should not be redeveloped when a comprehensive scheme for sustaining and growing all of the downtown public space and the activities and programming that it supports. We understand your assurances about accommodating Main Street and the market, but we have learned so far that we need to continue to stay engaged as the redevelopment process moves forward. We are not going away.
Well, Jim, I'm glad to hear you're not going away and certainly we'll continue engaging you in particular uh and Rebecca in uh and Javier as we move forward. Okay.
All right, uh, looks like Judy Eng is up next. Please state your name and address. You may have to unmute. There you go. Judy, can you state your name and address? Judy, I think Judy's having some technical difficulties.
All right, let's, we'll come back to her.
Okay. Judy, re-raise your hand when you think you you're ready, okay? Uh, next up is Rob Scott. State your name and address.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Rob Scott. I live at twenty-five South Second Avenue. Uh, and I'm here to speak to ask you to put a pause on uh Track C in the redevelopment plan. Uh, and first, I want to emphasize the importance of public space, and this is space that is uh owned uh by the people of the town. Okay, so I'm not a homeowner, I'm a renter, uh, and I use public space and it's very important to me. And what I want for myself and for my children is to have a good life. Uh, and part of that is to be part of a vibrant and connected community. And public space is important for that. So on on Friday, uh, my two daughters went back to school for the first time in a long time. Uh, they walked home from school. They walked in our um walkable town, which can be made more walkable. Uh, and then they came to the farmer's market. They cruised through the farmer's market. They spent time in the farmer's market. Uh, they visited the uh library stand and my eldest daughter picked up about um, I think a dozen books. Uh, she, ten, I'm told it was ten.
They're all free and they're all great.
They were free and they were great. She encountered neighbors. They recognized her, right?
I'm gonna go volunteer at the library.
And now she wants to volunteer at the library, right? You guys hear this, right?
Yeah, that's great.
It was the best part of my day. It made me happy. It was worthwhile. This is the function of public space. The problem with the plan as it stands is we're being given assurance, oh, we will have this. But what the plan gives up is the essence of the market. And the essence of the market space is the town owns it, right? This plan says we're going to sell it, trade it, and a developer will control it. It already does things very well, as Jenny Chapman pointed out. Uh, as the gentleman from Main Street Highland Park pointed out, uh, it does those things well. It has amenities. Uh, and there's no guarantee that a new space will do that. The only new space that has been put forward is what I call uh Track E. Okay, and I think Jim Constantine uh said uh there is actually nothing about South Third in the plan, right? That's Track D. It's not in the plan, right? So what we're hearing is that South Third is going to be likely replacement, but it doesn't appear in the plan, right? The traffic study hasn't been done. We don't know if we have permanent position to close the street. Today, we hear about a new purchase of a new property for four hundred and eighty thousand. How much has been invested in the current farmer's market property, right? Could we invest that four hundred and eighty thousand now in that and continue to improve it and build on something that is a success so we don't lose
Time.
A vibrant place.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, do we have I'm gonna go back to Julie Eng because I saw her hand went back up and hopefully we've resolved that issue. Judy Eng. Just state your name and address. Yes.
Hear me?
Now we can.
I unmuted it before. It didn't work.
Well, it's working now.
All right, perfect. I think it's because it's going through the computer audio instead of my phone. All right.
Um. Name and address?
Judy Eng, fourteen North Second Avenue. I want to talk about the location, what you're doing with the gun and boat shop. Um, I know currently where the international food market was, that's been redevi- you know, that's already been done. There's inadequate parking, obviously the business that's next door to me. He has the residents there blocking his business every day. Four cars are parked there on the street. He was supposed to have parking as part of the resolution, I guess, for him to have the building. And he's never purchased the parking. There's no enforcement of it. And that's another concern with whatever you're going to do with that building there, that there is absolutely inadequate parking. And then you have the intersection of Second and Dennison. That's a short runway. I watch every year when the, at the light, snow comes, people can't even get up the street. They just stop there and stuck. So that, I think that's the difficult thing. Plus, if you put a, I don't know, four or five story building, you've already last allowed Anton to block out my property on one side, block the sun, then I go to block the sun on the other side. I I don't know what else you guys want to do. Put a, put something else on the other side and 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 block everything out? That that part, um, um, just don't feel like that doesn't match what we have in the area here. And that's just something, you can't point to a parking deck, two deck, two blocks, three blocks blocks away because I don't think you guys could park two blocks away from your homes for two weeks and see if you could do it for two weeks and report back next time. If you could park two blocks away and walk every day back. If you could park two blocks away and walk every day back. So, you know, maybe you petition the state to allow us to park on Route twenty seven, that will allow more parking. And just have alternate side one day. As far as third and fourth avenue, the traffic studies. I don't believe, you only have so many accesses to the main street. You already see Rutgers is back, twenty seven is backed up. Everyone has to go up second and, and fourth or fifth. It's looks like you, I don't know why the whole third avenue is even closed. I, I, I kind of feel there are only certain accesses. More cars now than ever. And you guys still close off the street and in winter, when no one's sitting there. So I just think your ideas, some of them are actually good, but you can't, you know, have these things on the main access artery. You, you have no relief off the main street then, only so many access routes.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay, hold on one moment. Next is Elizabeth McCandish. Please state your name and address.
Can't hear me. Okay, now you can hear me. Elizabeth McCandish, two sixty Lincoln Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So now I have two questions. The first is, is there an updated version of the plan? Because I thought I heard in today's council meeting saying that there, they were thinking of not having a garage on North Third. And also that they were going to buy a property on South Third. And those things didn't fall into the plan document that I read. So is there an updated version? So that's my first thought.
Elizabeth, let's take one question at a time. So we remember all of the things you're asking. So the answer to your question is the plan does, does include a parking garage on North Third Avenue. So, so that's part one. And what we discussed earlier was the possibility now, once the council purchases that property that to keep our streets safer by connecting the parking lots behind the Raritan Avenue businesses.
Okay, so, all right, so you're saying that the plan on the borough website is correct as far as you've gotten so far. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say that the one thing that is a little different is the amount of open space we're talking about on South Third Avenue.
I see, okay. And I, I think it's a good idea to try to deal with the parking lots. I think that's been needed for a long time. And the second thing I want to ask is when you develop lots C, how do you plan to ensure that the developer actually makes it affordable and actually has a path and actually has a public square that is useful and not, you know, a minimal thing with, with two chairs and a table?
That's a really good question and that's part of what a redevelopment plan helps us do. I'm going to ask our attorney, Joe with our redevelopment attorney to address how we can ensure that the development on lot C is what we want.
So the benefits of the redevelopment plan and redevelopment area is that we will have a redevelopment agreement, which will be a contract between us and the redeveloper, where we will be able to contractually bind the redeveloper to all the things that were just asked about in that question.
I see, because you know there was a problem with, with writing, not, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other hands?
Yes, Maren, just to check in, it's just about quarter of and we're, we're at thirteen hands.
Okay, so I think we need to hear what people have to say before we vote on this, this ordinance on final reading. And my understanding, Borough Attorney H. Meyer, when at a hearing, we do want to listen to everyone who's, wants to speak, right, prior, okay. So, so it's a little different than the regular open public discussions. Once it comes to a second, a reading, a second reading on the ordinance, it's a, it's a hearing. So we're going to have to keep going with this. I will ask Terry that you, we ask people who have already spoken to let folks who have not yet spoken, speak before they do.
I will do my best. The next up is someone who's, it's a phone number and the last four digits of that phone number are four, 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 five. I've unmuted you. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lois Lebing, North Second Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, Ida has shown us that the redevelopment infrastructure is insufficient. So my question, how many borough buildings this time received water damage? Back in eighty eight, eighty nine, when Councilman Charles Fig was on, he went to a few of the homes. There were over two hundred townwide. He went to his neighborhood and look at the sewer damage. And his statement was terrible, just terrible. And I don't see any enlargement yet of the sanitary or the stormwater system. Second question, will DEP, CME, somebody enlarge the sanitary and storm drains, which are way too small? They were built, probably planned around nineteen hundred, built in the teens and the nineteen twenties. When will they be brought into the twenty first century? And let, this past May, an outdoor business meeting I attended, we heard an announcement that the borough would be closing soon, any day now, I think was the quote, on the old gun shop. Now, I met a new man from the International Market Anton's building, a gentleman from New York and he's parking on, oh, someone is telling him and probably the others to park on North Second. Well, he was parked in the middle of the multifamily, three family area. So, but that's legal. They said try Dennison here, it's a dead end. And we know that the art gallery is suffering greatly. You want to help businesses? Maybe get some people to park or rent if we don't own yet the gun shop, which apparently I lied to the new man from New York. Let people park from the International Market new building, excuse me, into, onto that vacant lot that used to be a parking lot next to the gun shop. If it's private, if that can be negotiated, so that they can have somewhere else to park rather than three and four days in front of the business on North Second. So now the delivery trucks are double parked. The, the customers have to keep going or go around the block searching for parking space only because someone has dropped the ball and hasn't found parking for those whatever, four or five apartments and the buildings downstairs. And I hope you didn't get we went thirty two years without sewage and don't ever get groundwater, have no sump pump. But boy, you gave it to us this time. Thank you.
Okay. Who is next?
Another phone number, last four digits, nine, six, five, five. Please state your name and address for the record. Again, oh, there you go.
Hello, this, my name is Alan Silver and I live on South Third. I'm opposed to the redevelopment plan as it exists. I just wanted to let you know why. A couple of weeks ago, I asked someone who has connection with the, with the town to, to find out when South Third was going to be reopened to the public. So that we'd be able to drive on South Third and get to Raritan Avenue. And I was told that it's not likely to happen, that there's this redevelopment going on and that, you know, the town has plans for permanently closing off South Third. I didn't know about it. I spoke subsequently to several other families, several other people on South Third. Most of them did not know about it. One, one person knew about it and felt sort of resigned to the fact that it was going to happen. The other people that I spoke to, about five or six other people, they had, they didn't know about the plan to close down South Third permanently. And when they heard about it, they were as upset as I was. I don't think it's fair to the residents of South Third to close the street permanently for a number of reasons. I also don't think it's appropriate to vote on the, on this plan tonight when we haven't received proper notice of this, of this matter. I read the emails that we get from the borough. I try to stay informed. I had no idea that this was going to happen, that this was going to be made permanent when the initial plan was presented and we were told that it was going to be temporary, that it was because of the COVID crisis. I felt like I should be a good citizen and I wanted to make sure that, you know, the businesses, the restaurants could remain open and have the tables put on South Third. I, I went along with that. I never complained about it. And now that COVID has abated somewhat, although it's still around, I wanted to find out why, you know, when we're, when we were going to have the street open to us again. I'm concerned about safety. I'm concerned about traffic. I, I'm concerned about emergency services. Ambulances, fire trucks, if they have to go on to South Third in an emergency and the driver forgets that it's the one avenue block that hasn't been, that that isn't, is no longer open, the extra minutes involved, it's going, could, could be, could be the difference between life and death. I feel like every day when I leave my home, I have to spend an extra minute or two in order to get to Raritan Avenue by, because I have to go through the side streets. It's really an inconvenience and so I don't think there's, there's, there was sufficient notice to us. I don't think you're sufficiently looking out for us. The plan itself talks about targeting millennials and empty nesters. That shouldn't be the focus of this council. You should be looking to protect all the residents of Highland Park and you shouldn't be put, looking to put it all on the backs of South Third residents by closing our street. I don't think anyone would want to go for this, this plan if they knew that their street would be closed and they would be inconvenienced permanently. My property value is going to decrease. My property rights are being taken away. And I, I don't have access to, to Raritan Avenue directly on South Third. It's not fair to us. And so I'm asking you to, at, at a minimum, table the discussion tonight and look to, to make sure that you talk to the residents of, of South Third to, to get our perspective. The, 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 the plan that I skimmed through on Friday when I, I noticed it.
Is that four minutes? Okay. Mr. Silver, would it be possible for you to make an appointment to meet with me and the Borough Administrator and Councilman Hale to discuss your situation?
All right, accidentally took, took him off.
Okay. Don't cut people off while I'm talking to them.
No, no, I didn't.
I, I just unmute, it was unmuted and I, I thank you, Madam Mayor, for offering that. I would like to meet with you.
So let's, let's set something up. You can reach me, my, my contact information is on the website. If it's easy enough for you to get to that. If not, the borough phone number is seven, three, two, five, seven, two, thirty, four, hundred.
I took down his phone number, so.
Oh, great. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, Terry, more hands?
Yes, next up Christine Lutz.
Ms. Lutz, we're going to have to ask you to find a better way to communicate.
Two devices going next to each other. That's, that's a feedback.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we're like a household logging on and we unfortunately are both next to each other. And I actually wasn't planning to speak because I think we did double raise hands to see who could speak first. But since I'm here, I just, I will just sort of back up the points so excellently made by Jenny, Alexis, Jim, Rob and some others that I really, I'm really so disappointed that I, and I am, I am pro for redeveloping our town, but I'm just so disappointed that we're looking at selling off such an incredible public space and maybe it's not beautiful or perfect, but I think there is a chance to beautify this space. I think it's an accessible space. I think it's more accessible than the potential South Third space. Our farmer's market is amazing. It's just getting better and better every year. And I don't see how we can keep that up in a smaller, more constricted space. And yeah, I, I just, I have concerns about that, what looks like a tiny public courtyard that's left there. And someone can correct me if it's not going to be tiny, but I was really surprised to see that left as the, the public space in that area. And again, just another, another person speaking up for the amazing things that go on in that space that we're able to do. The outdoor movie theater is great. You know, we're going to be having bands and vendors in that space during the garage sale days. Are we going to be able to have bands? We have, we have musicians at the farmer's market are going to be able to do stuff like that if it moves to a more residential area. So again, yeah, I'm just speaking up as another voice in favor of not losing this incredible space that I agree with Jenny. We can, we can work to beautify and invest in that a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, who, anybody else?
Next is Frank Bridges. Please state your name and address and make sure that feedback doesn't happen.
What, are they in the same household?
I believe they, anyway, Frank, did you want to speak as well?
Yeah, sorry about that. Now I've unmuted. Yes, I did want to speak and Christie was hands up for me, sorry. So yeah, I wanted to say, first off, Jim Nichols really summed up, actually, he did a great job of what I wanted to say. And I wanted to be clear that I'm not anti-development, nor do I feel that my thoughts and opinions are a name, which has been put out there before. I just wanted to voice my opinion that I've put my personal social capital, and I know many others have over the past ten plus years into the farmer's market and helped to make it what it is. I feel that space is really a jewel, much like a jewel on a ring, right, with Main Street being the ring and it sits there. We have the farmer's market. We have the, the pagoda thing where people come and do activities. We have the movie theater that Brian Onkin has, has worked really hard on and has really made it something. For me to hear about, we're going to move this somewhere and maybe there'll be a space, maybe we'll do some research. To me, that seems hugely problematic and not thought through. If you pitched me a plan with some drawings, I'd be like, yeah, I'm on board. That sounds pretty cool. I don't know what's being proposed today. And I think some of the people who are living on South Third seemed a little shocked as well of what's being proposed. I think having something fun and funky and weird is just great for our community and really sets us apart from other places. And personally, I want to make sure that we keep that. And I don't hear that we're doing that. And it's going to have a sterilized square somewhere, maybe or maybe not. So I am not for moving where we're at now until we hear about it or possibly move us to some other areas. There's many spaces around town. We know that are vacant or maybe there's other things to do. And then I do have a question. What are we going to do when we sell this property? What is the value? And then what is the town going to do with that money? We're getting in the real estate business, it looks like. What are we going to do with this? And I have not heard that said as well. Thank you.
So, so I want to address a couple of the things that you mentioned. The first thing I have to say, Frank, is I am a hundred percent with you on the funkiness of our town and making sure that whatever happens, wherever we wind up having this town square, and right now we're talking about South Third Avenue, is going to be as good, better, funky, fun. Artistic. It, it's, it's going to be something that we're really proud of. We're not going to do a sanitized kind of town square. It's just not us. So I wanted you to be clear about that. Um, and we will, as I said in the very beginning of the meeting, um, once we agree that we're going to have this redevelopment plan, I'm going to be asking the council at the next meeting to vote on a resolution that talks to just, just this, you know, our commitment to town square on South Third Avenue that is typical Highland Park, funky, different, artistic, musical, et cetera, et cetera. So you will see that in a resolution that we commit to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for keeping it funky. I appreciate that.
Uh, it looks like Andrew Zappo is up next. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Andrew Zappo, one thirty-one Johnson Street. Um, so my first question was about the tract A location. Specifically, the Ubre's Auto Shop. And what is the intent for that property? Um, I have passed by that property since moving to town since two thousand and three. And there's been a sign in the window referring to eminent domain and it being under the threat of that. Um, and it seems that that's still the case. I actually spoke to the owner today because I wanted to hear what he knew about uh, tonight's meeting and was actually surprised to find out that he didn't know tonight's meeting was happening. So, um, I think in line with the uh, gentleman who spoke, you know, a few speakers before me about the South Third situation, that the property owners who are gonna be impacted by this development plan should be insured to be invited to this type of discussion. So they can speak. And if they weren't, that would be uh, really unfortunate and it seems, you know, that would be something that should be corrected.
So, um, Andrew, of course, we would be talking to the property owners. In fact, I'm going to ask our attorney, Joe Baumann, um, to, to talk to that. I believe you have been in discussions with their attorneys.
Yeah, Mr. Ubre is well aware, as is his lawyer, that his property is not under the threat of condemnation. We've written him letters. We've explained it to him on the telephone. It's absolutely not under the threat of condemnation.
Okay. Yeah, he indicated he wanted something in writing to ensure that he was protected, so I hope that he does get it.
He has something in writing. He doesn't need it again.
Okay. And then my next uh, point was actually in line, you know, the mayor was talking about the funkiness of South Third. Um, the distance, you know, it, it's laid out in the, in the um, development plan between South, uh, excuse me, Raritan and South, uh, what is Magnolia, the distance in the lot that is um, Track C. If you were to equate that same distance over on South Third and you're going to make that available for public space, are you going to be required to buy all the properties that exist there? Cause otherwise they're gonna be intruded upon by these public spaces. These public events that you're gonna put in their front lawns and their driveways. How are they gonna get out of their houses?
Thirty seconds.
So that would be something that I think they should know. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any more hands?
Yes, Mayor, it looks like uh, we do. Uh, next up is Rob Roslevich.
Uh, and there's no one who hasn't spoken before?
He spoke not at this part of the hearing, so I wasn't sure. He spoke earlier, earlier.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
How many more hands do you have up?
We got eight hands total, including.
Rob, would you mind letting someone who hasn't voiced anything yet speak before you?
I would mind.
You would mind? Okay, well, so Rob's not yielding his time to someone who hasn't spoken. Go ahead, Rob.
Yes, in relation to uh, this redevelopment and what you are proposing for Track C and trying to say that you are going to put some sort of public space uh, on Third Avenue or South Third, excuse me, I, I just don't see it reasonably protected. If you are going to pass a resolution next meeting, then you need to table this whole resolution today. Pass your resolution and put it into the plan first and then pass your plan. Because right now, you already have uh, members of the public you're gonna set up a private meeting with who are already upset about the current closure. And now you're proposing to take pri, uh, public land uh, and parcel it off and exchange it for a land that the town doesn't own. I mean, we're talking about redevelopment here. We're talking about the potential to do something great for our town. Redevelopment takes existing structure and bones of the community and builds upon it. It's not just, okay, we have a blank slate and we're gonna slap a building into it. That kind of approach leads to failure. What we can do here is look at Track C. Look at it in a way because there is still room to develop Track C and preserve the farmer's market and improve on it and build on it. A lot of people said they don't see that as the town square because it's, you know, it's built on a parking lot. We can improve that in a way so that it's something to be even more proud of than we currently are and develop the properties around it and make it into something that enhances the town overall. Right now, the current plan of just saying, yeah, we're gonna sell that off to give it to a developer and we're gonna make South Third funky, but also make the homeowners happy and do it on a lot that's maybe a third of the size. And then you're gonna also have through traffic coming out of Rite Aid into that public space. So now we are limited in how big that actual property can be because we're going one driveway even closer to it. I, I don't see this as being the plan that you guys want or that the town wants right now or that it's gonna be put it on right now. What you wanna do is if you're gonna have a resolution to amend the plan and, and protect downtown public space, it needs to be in the plan today, not in a resolution that comes after the fact.
Rob, I wanna be clear about two things. One, I did not say we're going to have a resolution to amend the plan. I am asking the council in a resolution to be able to talk to how committed, how committed they are to South Third Avenue. That's what the resolution will emphasize. It doesn't change anything in the plan. I also want to uh, emphasize that once we have South Third Avenue as a public square, it can be a twenty-four seven dedicated space, not a parking lot, but switches on thirty-three days of the year to a farmer's market, then to something else, then to a parking lot. Um, you know, so what we're talking about is creating permanent public space. That's what this is all about and I have to tell you, um, we've been working, as I said in the very beginning of this, with some very experienced, incredibly creative um, planners and attorneys to help us find a way to make this plan happen.
Then it should be in the, the redevelopment plan now. It shouldn't be part of a resolution to, about how dedicated you are preserving it. It should be in today's plan that you're voting on. Otherwise, you shouldn't put on it. Thank you.
Looks like Laurel Kornfeld is next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Laurel Kornfeld, one oh six North Sixth Avenue, and I just wanna say I'm speaking for myself and not for any boards or commissions that I serve on. Um, first of all, regarding the farmer's market, why not make the current site more funky? Um, I, you know, I wanna echo what everybody else said. I signed a petition. I think it's a great, it functions as a great town square and we can make it better. Um, we also, I also wanna remind people, there is a uh, memorial pavilion there for Susie Welkowitz. Um, which means a lot to a lot of people in town. And I wanted to ask, have the farmers and the vendors who participate been told about this and been asked for their input and what they think about it? Next, um, I wanted to add that apparently the word about this entire plan has, doesn't seem to have gotten out publicly enough. There are many uh, business owners on Raritan Avenue that don't know anything about it or just found out because somebody walked in and talked to them about it. And, and I understand that, you know, we've had a pandemic for the last eighteen months, so information, you know, if that, that dominated the information. But I think we need more time to make sure all the stakeholders are informed and well-informed and have a chance to give their input. Um, regarding the uh, the, the deck, which I oppose, um, I think that saying, well, we all, some, I don't remember who said it, well, we have a train station. It just happens to be in New Brunswick, is not realistic. Um, we're talking about asking people to walk in increasingly extreme weather, heat waves, uh, downpours, snowstorms. Um, and, and not everyone can do that. Um, and I think that, you know, if, if we take away the parking at Track C, that means a lot of people who are either coming from out of town or from, for more distant areas in town won't be able to park there and shop in Highland Park. And I'm concerned about the uh, emissions because uh, having more residents will be, mean more cars, more people driving because there's no way the majority of people will be able to work from home or uh, not have a car. So there is an environmental issue involved and a safety issue with the traffic. Therefore, I ask that this be postponed, that this decision be postponed until more feedback is gotten from
Thirty seconds.
And more of, and effort is made to engage the business owners that are on Raritan Avenue.
I just wanna say before we go on, uh, Laurel, I have personally gone into just about every store on Raritan Avenue to talk to our business owners.
As have I.
And other things, and Matt Hale has as well. Um, okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, uh, it looks like Pam Dorman is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Pam Dorman, four twenty-three South Fifth Avenue. Um, I have sort of followed uh, the redevelopment plan. Um, I, I understand the purpose of redevelopment so that the town has more say over what happens with properties. Um, one of my concerns is, um, I think what's being voted on today is the possibility of selling uh, part of the tract where the current farmer's market is, uh, selling that uh, to uh, someone to uh, develop and, um, and, and build apartments there. Um, it was my understanding that um, when developers purchase under the redevelopment plan, that there will be some incentive um, for them um, that we won't necessarily in the next, in the short term um, be getting the same amount of property taxes as is tip, as is typical when someone develops um, uh, housing. Um, so I'm just concerned about, um, that it, if it ends up that we have to do this, that it ends up being a fiscally responsible. I'm also concerned about the infrastructure for additional um, the housing, as someone else talked about earlier in terms of the um, sewer system in town. So, right. So I, I'm just concerned about selling um, uh, the property where, that the borough currently owns um, for housing.
So I'm, I'm just going to ask Joe Baumann, our attorney, to address two things. One is um, a redevelopment plan does not necessarily require uh, reduce taxes or give reduced taxes to the developer. Uh, Joe, you wanna talk to that for a moment?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I just generally, a lot of the comments are sort of way ahead of what we are. Um, discussions about actually selling the property, for example. We're not even close to that. Discussions about pilots or tax
Thirty seconds.
Close to that. Um, even the, there's still work to be done on how we're gonna relocate the public space. I think it's, there's a commitment, which I think the council is gonna memorialize the future, that we will make sure. It says it in the plan. We've said it at every meeting, that there will be a vibrant public space when we come out of this process. We're still at the infancy of this process. We're just trying to set the zoning for these areas. That's all we're doing.
Right. That's a good summary, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more hands?
We do, Mayor. Um, it looks like Zev Strupinski. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Zev Strupinski, coming from five twelve South Third Avenue, and I've raised a hand in front for the last twenty years. So I would like to echo what Alan Super said. I'm deeply opposing the closing of Third Avenue. Uh, I am personally impacted. So again, as Alan mentioned, uh, one day it was closed due to Covid. I view it as a help to the businesses to stay afloat. And I along, uh, went along with that and think it's a good idea, help businesses survive. And I'm ready to do whatever is needed to help them. Uh, it's completely different story when it's becoming permanent closure. I'm driving my kids for last twenty years between South and Third. As of today, so Covid was not indication, one that Terry mentioned, that it's already closed for some significant amount of time. During the Covid, most of the schools were closed. Public schools were closed as well. My school was open and therefore the time was not indicative of what is happening today. As of today, after the Labor Day, it takes me additional ten to fifteen minutes to drive to One Direction and back. And it's happening twice a day, to school, from the school. Uh, the traffic in, in, increased significantly over the, over the Second Avenue. Because Fifth Avenue on the morning, there are a bunch of cars that coming for the, bring kids to the, to the middle school, uh, to the elementary school. So Fifth Avenue is becoming loaded with the traffic that coming from the other part of the town. So for me to close to the north part of the town, the only viable way to go is the Second Avenue. And it's already loaded. I need to wait about three, five lights in order to cross to North Side. And same happening on the way back to cross to the Fourth Avenue. It's additional time that's extremely inconvenient. I would like to echo as well, if somebody need to go quickly on Third Avenue, whether it's a first responders, ambulance, trucks, it's will be, it's, it's will be significant uh, to, to make it go around. So, uh, so again, I, I personally deeply opposing or closing, so I would ask you, until the plan finalized, why you, the street must be open already until everything finalized. We're keeping us uh, uh, sort of, as of now, the street is keep closing and it's inconvenience if keep going for more than a year for me personally. And I'm probably speaking for many other. I would like as well echo that many, many people who live in Conthard Avenue and around there have
Thirty seconds.
Have no idea about the details of the plan. I think the borough and the committee has an obligation to send email to every single resident with a detailed description how the plan is supposed to go, what is will be developed and how it's gonna be affected. Uh, and, and the end of this process, I believe it should be public voting of entire residents of Highland Park, how it's supposed to go. Before you guys voting for any plans of, uh, so we, the public should see what it will be and how it should be. Uh, so I, I, so again, I, I'm ready to, to, to schedule the meeting, cause the Madam Mayor, I can uh, speak on modules. Again, I believe many people will opposing, so a personally affected who live in Conthard Avenue and not aware of the, what they, what the plan to permanently close the street.
Thank you, Mr. Strupinski. Okay, Terry, is there anyone else?
Um, yes, I believe we have David Hughes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. David Hughes, uh, three thirty South Third Avenue. I live on the street which seems to be suddenly in dispute. And I wanna dispute everything that Mr. Silver and Mr. Strupinski said. I'm very happy with the state of affairs with the public space, the temporary public space created on South Third right now. Um, I object to the use of the word closure with respect to that block. It is actually more open than it was before because you can walk safely through it. Uh, my kids no longer go to school, but if they were still going to the high school, they would be very happy to walk through that space and I walk through that space. It is only closed to people who choose to move planet destroying one ton hunks of steel through our town. So I, I want this street to remain open. And I, but also, uh, Mayor, I don't want you to take the residents of South Third seriously. We don't actually have authority. This is the public street grid. It is the property of the whole town. And just because for the accident of living next to it, you don't get to call the shop. And just because for the accident of living next to it, you don't get to call the shots. We don't get to call the shots as to whether a dam goes up or a dam comes down on Raritan River, because that is a state resource. And the people who live on South Third do not get to call the shots as to whether it's a street for cars, a street for pedestrians, a one-way street, a two-way street, a street with on-street parking or not. It's a public resource. And I hope that if you, if you choose to appease this guy, uh, this refuse Nick and meet with him, Mayor, I want you to include me as well. Because he does not have any more standing in this matter than any other mem- resident of this town. And we are represented by the council, and I will trust the council to make the right decision with respect to South Third. Having said that, I'm a bit disappointed that you haven't made that decision yet. There is nothing in hand to replace the um, the current uh farmer's market space. And as many people have said, it will, we could wind up with nothing. You've been putting the cart before the horse. You should acquire the land, do the traffic study, get the permission of the DOT, and get the replacement public space in hand before we do anything to the farmer's market. And if you moved in that order, three quarters of the people on this call would be very happy. Thank you very much.
David, that is the order we're moving in, and tonight we're voting on acquiring that piece of land. And uh Attorney Baumann, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to add again, we're just setting the zoning for these three parcels. It doesn't mean that there's, we don't have any developers in something in mind, we don't have a project in mind. We still intend to identify vet and have a open space before we remove the existing open space. That's been stated at every meeting, the governing bodies being unanimous in their direction to the professional team. All we're doing is setting the zoning. We're not moving, there's, the next step is to continue to vet the replacement space and make it happen before we take it away, if we do do that.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, Terry, more hands?
Yes, we have five hands up. A few have spoken before, uh, but I don't believe you heard some Natalie Levine, you're up next.
Hi, Natalie Levine, sixteen twenty-five Parker Road. Um, I guess I should say I'm speaking as myself and not representative of any boards or commissions. Um, I was going to say something else, number people about the plaza in Princeton.
Natalie, you're
I also live
You're breaking.
Let me go to a different room in my
Now this is better.
Okay, um, so I grew up in Princeton. I lived there as an adult as well, and I work there now in the library that's right next to the plaza that people have been mentioning. Um, I spent the morning in the plaza today. I've performed music there. I've shopped at the farmer's market there. I've planned rallies there. Um, it's an amazing public space, as people have mentioned, and I remember when that space was created. And the difference between that redevelopment plan and this redevelopment plan is that that plan created public space, which this plan is not doing. Um, and as someone else said earlier, it's not a coincidence that the farmer's market lot is Highland Park's quote-unquote Town Square. It has a lot to do with the fact that it's next to the Reformed Church, which as this person mentioned, is Highland Park's quote-unquote Community Center. Just like in Princeton, the Town Square was deliberately placed next to the public library, which has public restrooms, it has public meeting spaces, it has free parking attached to it, it has many organizations that are kind of based there, just like the church. So I don't think that the, the farmer's market lot and its function now as our community Town Square can just be moved to any other space. It's not, it's not like a neutral, it's not a neutral location. There are all these things that uh are possible there because of its location next to the church. Um, but I understand that it's possible that the Town Square is going to be relocated. I also wanted to echo what other people have said about wanting to have the Borough Council's commitment to that relocation in hand before before this redevelopment plan is passed. I think I I'm really glad to hear that, Mayor, that that's your strong intention and that you're gonna ask the rest of the council to commit to that along with you, but I don't understand why that commitment can't happen tonight either as part of for it. Um, the other thing I want to say is that the reason that I left Princeton to move to Highland Park is because of something else I saw happening there, which was redevelopment of community assets into unaffordable housing complexes. And the reason I moved to Highland Park is because I saw this as a community that really values public space and community space. And I've heard those values reflected in the comments of a lot of our neighbors here tonight, and I hope that as this redevelopment plan goes forward, I'm sure that you'll continue to act um according to those values of this community.
Thank you, Natalie.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, I'm trying to look, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Harold Sacrowitz, because I don't believe he has had a chance to speak. Could you please your address?
Uh, Harold Sacrowitz, six seventeen South Fifth Avenue.
Hello.
Alright, so I had, um, I'm still wondering if if any of the studies that you're gonna be doing will be an analysis of the, of uh, say the pot- potential financial burden that the parking deck would have for us. Um, initially, it sounds like we're going to be paying for a part of it. And at the last meeting, I was surprised to hear that as an estimate, parking decks cost between twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars per space. So that sounds like a sizable investment for us. Uh, and that, and then it turns out that that parking deck is not intended really to serve any of the current residents. It's not intended to serve out-of-town visitors or shoppers, and that it's intended mainly to subsidize parking for the new residents. So I'm, I'm wondering if, so now that's, and maintaining that is an ongoing something we'll have to pay for in future years. So I was wondering if any of the studies is going to be looking into that as well.
So I'm going to ask our borough, our redevelopment attorney to talk to the cost issues regarding the parking deck and how it would be paid for.
Yeah, so the parking that, the numbers that you described, I think are accurate. The, we're so far removed from trying to figure out that parking deck at this point, how big it'll be, who will park in it, what it will actually cost, what it'll be designed, whether the property owner will even cooperate with us uh, in terms of locating it. So, um, but at the appropriate time, we'll, we'll, there will be a full study before we make any final decisions.
And the, and the payment of those, that parking lot, we've talked about uh, talking to the developers about, Joe, do you want to talk to that?
I mean, we've talked about every, you know, developers paying for a share, um, the proceeds of the sale of land for a property. We're gonna, you know, whatever tool is in our toolbox, whatever source of income we can identify, um, we will use to manage the cost. Analysis to come in the future. We're just waiting, we're not there yet.
And I just, to to also clarify is that the, the plan of the parking garage is not a subsidy for the new is that we would have the developers subsidize the construction of this. So it's not the borough putting money into it that at at this point, as as Joe said, we're far, far away from this, but the idea is not a subsidy, it is that they will subsidize the creation of this, so.
And um, uh, our planner, Jim Constantine, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, Mr. Baumann.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more hands?
Mayor, yes, we have three hands, I believe. Two have spoken during the redevelopment and one spoke at the opening, but did speak to redevelopment, but it's just at three, so do you want
Okay, so let's cap it at three, um, and and uh, we'll go on to the rest of the agenda.
Okay, uh, I see Carl Prey up next. State your name and address.
Hi, uh, Mary Forsberg, again, three seventeen Denison Street. Um, I'm, I am, uh, I'm interested in Track C. I know everybody is very concerned about Track C, and the farmer's market is obviously an important thing in Highland Park, but I'm also equally concerned about finances. As someone who lives on Denison Street, who pays higher than average property taxes in Highland Park, I am very concerned about the effect of um this redevelopment on property taxes. Thirty-one River Road, I think, is a very good example of what we might expect. Uh, uh, Mr. Baumann said that we're gonna be collecting a hundred thousand dollar pilot, which doesn't give money to the schools. Um, but if we were to collect property taxes, we'd be collecting something like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or more. I forget exactly what the actual number is. So I think we should be very concerned about the finances of it. We should be talking about that a lot more. Um, the parking garage, which Harold just brought up, um, parking garages do not pay for themselves. Developers are not going to be subsidizing it. We will be putting meters and will be paying fines. That's what, that's what Princeton does. Um, six mil-, um, when we're buying property, when you are buying property in this town, we're losing property tax revenue every single time you buy property. It takes it off the property tax rolls. So when you buy all of Tract A, we'll be losing hundreds of thousands of dollars in property taxes. Now, also the six million dollars that you have to play with and buy stuff for redevelopment, six million dollars would go a very, very long way in making Track C a much more attractive place. Track C is not a particularly attractive place right now, but you could make it a lot nicer.
And the sewer system.
And you could also fix the sewer system, so we wouldn't all have like flooding in our basement, which um, I think that is something that you really need to be considering right now. Um, so that's, I think, I think that uh, the, the finance of this is an extremely important thing. And while we may not be um at the point of building a parking garage, you are clearly seriously considering it because, ouch, because um, Tim Haas, T H A Consulting, is a parking garage builder, not a person who does management studies of parking.
Also the new one.
And, and the new one is also the new person you're going to be hiring at this meeting is also a building, a parking garage builder.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Terry.
Uh, looks like, uh, Alvin Chin has his hand up again.
Thank you, Terry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, with regards to the parking garage, we have lots of experts just across the river um, who can give us like independent uh confirmation, but Gerald Giosa is a good parking consultant, and I respect his numbers. Um, with regard to my main point, which is people speaking for people on South Third, I live on South Third. I don't like it when people say, oh, like, everyone on South Third doesn't like this. Well, not everyone on South Third doesn't like it. Some people like it. And like, I am very close, I'm, I think a hundred meters from the town tables, I'm hundred fifty meters from the road closure. I'm not someone who's like all the way down on Graham or Donaldson. Um, this affects me on a regular basis, and I'm fine with it. I accept it and I embrace it, and I encourage the council to take people who claim to speak for everyone on South Third with a massive grain of salt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. Okay, there should be one more hand, correct?
Your, your memory is correct. It looks like Judy Eng has raised her hand again. If you could just confirm it's you and state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, fine. Just real quick, um, I just want to mention about the third and fourth avenue thing, because again, I just feel like the streets are for vehicles, the sidewalks are for walking, because you could walk through the streets as one part, but it doesn't, it's not closed off down to the park or down to the other end of whatever. And so, you know, sidewalks are for the walking. And again, you know, you could put the tables on the sidewalks and restore streets and aggresses to the way it was prior to the pandemic. And I think the planners, the transportation guys who plan the city, you know, that's exactly how they plan it, to have easy arteries off the main street, they have a function. And I think we need to return it to that function, and that's it. That's it for me. Thank you all.
Thank you, Judy. Um, and before we can go on, Borough Attorney Schmier received a copy of a letter from a resident that um, we have to read into the record.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This morning, the Clerk's Office received a message from a Mark Lebuskind, who requested that this be read into the record. His email asked questions about two issues identified as A and B below. On the agenda for the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting is the hiring of Level G to replace T H A to construct, to conduct the parking study required by the Planning Board's consistency review, finding Track C inconsistent with the master plan unless the following was done. Number one, by a vote of eight to one, the board finds that Track C is inconsistent with the master plan unless the following recommendations are implemented. There shall be a multi-use public plaza accessible from Raritan Avenue, unless or until there's another location devoted to that public plaza. And there can be allowed more than one multi-level building on the track. Farmer's Market activities cannot be maintained on Track C, and the plan should explore the relocation of the farmer's market to a viable location other than North Third Avenue. Sufficient parking must be provided for the current uses on and around Track C. Parking analysis should be done to verify the parking needs of the Reformed Church of Highland Park and the community activities that occur with the church, as well as Raritan Avenue businesses in the area of Track C. The study should also reflect the need to accommodate open space activities and the safety issues regarding biking and pedestrian access. How exactly will the analysis of the needs of the R C H P and the businesses in the area of Track C, including our needs, be a special, be made especially since uh this, since the pandemic-related impairment on these activities? Will the consultant required to communicate with all of the businesses in the area of Track C so that they can understand our needs? It is a matter of public record that R C H P has sent correspondence to the borough explaining that, that a pre-endemic, that they account for a hundred and eighty cars per day on Track C lot, and three thousand uh people use the church each week for non-church activities. The R C H P has informed me that their staff occupy twelve to fifteen parking spaces a day. I have observed on several days that the Track C lot has about thirty cars on average without anything special going on. Pre-endemic, pre-pandemic, the lot was full on most days, more than one. In a conversation I had with Seth Capert Dale, he explained how events at the church have caused the lot to be full, and attendees park wherever they can on our streets. Uh, J K J, uh, J K J Enterprise LLC has two retail stores, three apartments, and advanced space capable of holding approximately two hundred and fifty people any one time. B B K Highland Park LLC has two adjacent restaurants as tenants. And with the, cause, will, will the consultant speak with the understanding that our customers and their tenant customers have parking needs? Will there be a public presentation with a consultant and the ability to ask questions? At the last redevelopment entry, entity meeting, you made objections and raised concerns about having heavy development on Cleveland Avenue. You have said that the borough needs ratables and use that as a reason to heavily develop Raritan Avenue. You need ratables, then why aren't you attempting to get them from wherever you can? And he asked that the, in addition to reading this, that it be addressed, my recommendation would be to forward these comments to the traffic consultants which you're hiring this evening and have this addressed by your consultants. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. All right, we're gonna move on now. Um, may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise this ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canovera.
First, I'd like to say, as a low-income resident, I know how much the farmer market means, not just to my family, but other families in the community. It allows low-income families to get fresh produce at affordable prices. Also, Main Street, Highland Park, and the staff do an amazing job promoting free and fun activities for our community. I would never vote for anything that would put an end to that. However, tonight, we're not voting to sell the property. We are just voting on a plan, and I feel that we do need a plan, so therefore I vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Foster.
Before my vote, I would like to say that I am the senior on the council, and this entire redevelopment plan, or this entire plot, has been in the works now for almost twenty years. We've had charrettes in town, we've met with people, there was talk of presumptive development, intimate domain, the market crashed, we came back and we dusted off the plans, and we're doing a revisit. A lot of persons that have called in tonight was on those committees that we looked at in the past. And the plan was always to have Highland Park developing to a place where we all know and love. We, we all are here because we, we love our town of Highland Park, and we want the very best for our town. You've entrusted us to, and many of you who spoke tonight were on some of the committees for this, this development that we're looking at. When I came to Highland Park, there was no farmer's market there. That was put in later on. When I came on council, we implemented a farmer's market. The farmer's market was at someplace else on the same property before. And people who have been around know of the accidents or the hits and miss that we had when the street was wide open and you could have full access to that parking lot. And it's because of the many, many accidents that we've had during the farmer's market that we closed off that street and that became a closed street. Just a little bit of history. After the street was closed, we decided that, you know, let's, for more public safety and to keep more people safe and to avoid accidents, the, the farmer's market was moved to where it currently is. With that in mind, and moving forward, as we're looking to move forward, with developing a plan for our downtown and developing a plan for a safe area where people can get fresh fruits and vegetables and where it is a resource to our community. Because a lot of people who once lived in food, food deserts now have a fresh, a fresh place to buy fresh produce and, and many other things that the farmers, the farmer's market offer. I vote yes to move forward because I know that we have carefully, over the years, looked at providing this kind of resource to our members of our town. I know I utilize it. I know my parents, when they come from Jamaica, that's the first place my mother goes to, the farmer's market. So we are going to be very careful in making sure that people have access to fresh produce, to fresh fruits, to have a farmer's market in town, and to make it be a place that's safe and accessible to all. With that, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman George.
The issue was not the farmer's market. The issue was not South Third. The issue was not North Fourth. The issue was what do we want to do with our town in the future? As Jim Nichols noted, there's no guarantee on redevelopment plans. The redevelopment plan of two thousand five is what we're, we had to revisit several years ago and have been revisiting since then. It's what do we want our town to be? What's interesting is the comments about the farmer's market seek to institutionalize it as one more institution that can't be changed. And yet, as Elsie said, years ago, it was a pickup gig. It was a serendipitous find that council at the time thought might work and worked with Main Street, and it worked. The reason it worked is because ultimately we decided to close the entrance where everyone skipped the light at South Second when you couldn't turn left between four and six and cut through the lot. But you couldn't do it on Fridays because of all the pesky tables and trucks. That's when it hit. And it was serendipitous. But where does everybody else go for a town center when it's not open from eleven to six on Friday? Serendipitously, we've started going because of one positive thing about the pandemic to the South Third Town Tables and, and everybody's watering hole, the public tables on North Fourth. Serendipitously, we've created our own. I would warn us about trying to institutionalize those. You talk about making it funky, making it this, making it that. Skip the label. What do you want the town to be? Don't look at institutionalizing anything. As someone said, all this is is changing zoning. The reason that people got more upset than they should have is because people wanted drawings of what those zonings would look like. They're pure fiction. Pure fiction. I have some misgivings about the plan. I've told the mayor, I've told Councilman Hale, I've told Jim, and Jim, that I have, you know, some things I'm not sure workable in Highland Park, but I'm not making that decision. You know, you say that we're hiding things, we're making the deal, we're not. The developers who look at the zoning and say, I might be able to do something here, are the ones who will make the decision. The planning board will have to decide after public hearings as to whether they work and whether they're consistent with the zoning that we're going to adopt tonight. But it's not about the farmer's market. It's about our town. Our town starts at the bridge and our town ends at the car wash. Our start, town, town starts at the doughboy and it ends at due close lane. And everybody is a member of our town, every single one of us. And we have to remember that, too. And you talk about who uses the farmer's market and this and that. We all use all of our town, and that's what this is about. That's why we have to vote yes. That's why I vote yes. And I, again, as Jim Nichols said, it's a gamble. Let's see what'll happen. But we are not selling the farmer's market tomorrow. We are not tearing it down tomorrow. And just remember, it's just a parking lot that got luck. Yes.
Councilman Hale.
So I want to thank all of the council members who have, have spoken tonight. I want to thank them for their thoughtful questions throughout this entire process. I want to thank the mayor and Terry and Joe and Jim, our unbelievable professional staff, who has, who has put this together. This is an opportunity, and I, and, and, and we're going to seize it. And we're going to seize it, and we are going to work with all of the people who say we can't do this to make this the best possible redevelopment that we can do and to make a, a significant change. I think that this is a great, great step forward for Highland Park. I think we have a lot of work to do. This is the beginning of the process. This is by no means the end of the process. There is a lot of work ahead of us, but it's work we can do, and it's work that we can do together. I enthusiastically vote yes for this. Again, I thank all of my fellow council members, and I thank our professionals who've put a lot of months, almost years of hard work into this. And so thank you very much, and I, again, enthusiastically vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you to the public for, for coming out and speaking. Ed, I'm sorry that you had to read a public comment, but for that commenter that's not part of the course to use borough staff when they could have showed up and spoken themselves. But I appreciate everybody who came out and, and spoke. And we take your concerns really seriously. I, I volunteer weekly at, at the farmer's market and at the outdoor movie theater. I pop popcorn at the outdoor movie theater, you know, and, and it's, you know, laborious, and we're hauling stuff, and we're, you know, you know, we're just doing it for free. And, and, and that's where the essence, you know, we talk about the essence of the downtown. I've never been on that parking lot and thought, this could be, this, this is great because of this parking lot or because of its location, you know, relative to the downtown. The essence of the downtown is its people and the volunteers that commit so much time and effort to making great things with very, very limited built public space. You know, you walk downtown and there are huge gaps that are missing. This is what that plan tries to address. And I think relatively, I think success, and, and I feel successfully. This plan is ambitious. It creates kind of a gateway feel into town. It creates more built planned public space that will enable all of the wonderful programming that happens downtown anyway. The only reason why there's so much wonderful programming that happens on the farmer's market, and this is, again, this is, I spent a lot of time there, and, and I think we've all spent a ton of time thinking about this and meditating about the future of our town, because this is important. This is a very important bone, as Councilman Hale says, you know. This is really just the first step, and there's a lot more planning to come. But the reason why so much wonderful, so, so many wonderful things happen on that parking lot is because it's the only space right now that we have. So we need to create more public spaces. We need to create more activity downtown. We need to create more opportunities for vitality, you know, in, in, in our downtown. I mean, we moved here in two thousand eight. You know, the first thing we noticed was that this is a wonderful place. There's a lot of, there's a lot of wonderful restaurants. Hey, we can get everywhere because it's such a small place. You know, I can hop on my bike and ride a mile and be across town. But obviously, there is a lot lacking downtown, and we're not reaching our full potential. You know, we complain about, I don't want to say complain, we, we, we have concerns about municipal services. We talk about sewer and infrastructure. We talk about garbage pickup. And we talk about, you know, a, a, a road repair and potholes. Having economic health as a result of a more vibrant downtown, I feel will address a lot of those problems. But that's, I don't want to get off, I don't want to get off track there because I do have more to say. Somebody mentioned Princeton. Natalie Levine, hello, I grew up in Princeton, too, class of ninety-five. And a PHS class, no, no, I went to Rutgers. And, you know, I remember what, what, I, I remember what those spaces, you know, I always were, I, I, I worked in the retail shops as a, you know, as a high school kid. I worked at the, I worked at the Sam Goody, I worked at Washwood's Bakery, and I worked at the Princeton Garden Theater. Interacting with downtown as third spaces, as community spaces, what has, has, has been part of my calculus ever since I, you know, ever since I don't know when. So when I, when I go to other towns, I look to see what works. You know, I look to see, I look to steal some good ideas. You know, with Princeton, you might remember, though, that those were borough-owned surface lots where the library, parking deck, the public plaza, and, and, and some of the new housing was. What Princeton didn't do, though, was that they didn't host programming on those parking lots, you know, before there was anything there, largely because there wasn't a lot of programming that happened in the streets, you know, and there really wasn't a public square, you know, and I, I know, and I know you're thinking Palmer Square. But Palmer Square, where people congregate with the Christmas tree, is privately owned by the Nassau Inn. You know, so it's, there, there really was, not until the plaza next to the public library downtown, was there a public park that really allowed for town convenings. And I think that that's really the opportunity with, 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 with what was being discussed about South Third. And I look forward to moving forward with that because I think that the opportunity there on South Third, to be able to open the Rite Aid parking lot, which right now is inconsistent with the master plan, that, that, that barrier there, that, that, that prevents access there, will not only ease some of the traffic for vendors coming in. Mr. Ross Leibich, I don't think it's going to be a cut through. I think there will be primary access for, I mean, it would be primary access for any vendor activity that, 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 that happens over there. What it also allows us to do is that it allow us to do things that also conform to the master plan, like close unnecessary curb cuts, you know, the Petmar Building, which is another bifurcated lot, you know, adjacent to the Rite Aid parking lot, you know, where cars just kind of pop out of that building right over the sidewalk on a Raritan Avenue as you're leaving Rite Aid. So we can do that and, you know, slowly chip away at those things that conform to our master plan and that make town more pedestrian-friendly, more bicycle-friendly. And, you know, I, I, I wanted to echo what, what Councilwoman Canavera said. You know, I would never support any redevelopment effort that would threaten the farmer's market. Again, I volunteer there. I know how important these institutions are. And particularly during and after COVID, we need more public space in our downtown to do the fantastic programming that occurs because of the hard work of borough staff and volunteers. And again, the essence of the farmer's market, in my opinion, is the people. It's not the parking lot. And it's a strange position to be in to, you asked to preserve a parking lot. I know the idea is to turn it into, is, is, is to turn it into a public space, but like Council President George says, you know, it was, it was just, it was, it was coincidental that so much activity happened there on the parking lot because it was available. Now we have an opportunity, though, to make real, a real town square, real public space where we can engage and interact. We're, and we're at a crossroads in the town, and it's exciting. Since we moved here, there is more life, there's more activities. We're surviving the pandemic. Our retail vacancy, I don't know if you've noticed, is relatively low, but it's our property vacancy that is high. It's these areas that we desperately need to fill in. We have two new industries coming to town in the form of e-scooters and cannabis retail. And as we slowly emerge from the pandemic, there's a renewed interest in downtown Highland Park. We have a chance to strengthen our downtown, create more jobs for in-town workers, wage earners, high schoolers, create more homes for new neighbors. You know, we can't shut the door on the community once, once we arrive. We, but we can, we can make room responsibly. We can ease the traffic burden on our streets. We can create better bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Improve our economic health, and we'll have the positive effects elsewhere. And, and, and that, and those things will have positive effects elsewhere, including on improving municipal services and things like environmental justice, you know, access to more retail, access to food, access to jobs, access to housing. You know, these are the things that make a small town, any town thrive. And fortunately, when, when, when we're fortunate, because we're small, we can do it on a scale that is relatively small, and it can make a huge impact. And these aren't, you know, empty promises. Every event that we have here shows how much of a, how much of a destination Highland Park is, whether it's Arts in the Park, Street Fair and Craft Show, the annual five K, farmer's market, the outdoor movie theater. I don't know if anybody went to the American Repertory Ballet's performance of The Nutcracker last year at the, at the parking lot. The windows of understanding, the holiday festivities, the town tables, vigils, protests, gatherings and celebrations, we rely on the very limited, damaged, and, yes, beloved, public space to host them. The amended, the, the, this amendment to the redevelopment element of the community master plan that there has four properties in town. And it represents an ambitious plan that carefully pieces together several properties as part of a comprehensive first step toward creating a downtown that's more pedestrian-friendly, more bike-friendly, more retail-friendly, and one that could provide new homes for new neighbors. That's exciting to me, and we should be excited for our downtown in this respect. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of work that the borough needs to do when it comes to communicating this idea, engaging people, making sure that people come to the table, reaching into the communities and making sure that voices are heard when it comes to designing any kind of new public space. And there are some major concerns that Main Street has made clear in their preference to stay on that site, but they have said that, that, that they will also work no matter where. And I think there needs, and, and I personally think that the parking lot, track C, needs to be developed, that there needs to be buildings there, there needs to be built physical space there. There needs to be green space and open space there that can have seating, where people can hang out, where there's retail. We don't know the square footage yet. We're not there yet. But I think that that lot really is, I mean, it used to, it, it used to have buildings on it. It used to be the rec center. There was a factory there. And I really do think that it would serve that part of town much better if there were built physical spaces on that site. I'm sorry, everybody. I, I, I just, I, I've just been thinking so much about this.
And the vote is?
Well, I bet. One more thing, I really, really, really believe that this is our shot. I disagree that our legacy is privatizing this parking lot. This is the privatization of an asphalt lot. I think that's so unfair because it is not who this council is and it's not representative of who this community is. It's the people and the programming and the volunteer bandwidth and the fact that people are so keyed in to what goes on in this town and want to make it so good. And then we are limited, you know, we see it, we know that we're limited. You know, we say all these things, that we have all these wonderful things and we know that they can be better. And yet we somehow, some of us don't, you know, necessarily want to go through those windows to, to, to make things better. But I believe that our legacy will be the town that closes a street to transform it into a public park and to make better use of our glut of in-town McCadham. That's a legacy that I think that we can really be proud of, not privatizing an asphalt lot. It's the fact that we are making the best use of the space that we have and factoring in all of the creativity, all of the energy and all the wonderful things that our volunteers and Main Street and everybody brings to the table when it comes to creating programming downtown because it's all we have. You know, we have wonderful restaurants, but you know, there's, you know, that, that's really what makes town tick. And nobody up here or virtually on Zoom is, 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 would ever support anything that would threaten the, the farmer's market or any of the program that happens there. I think this plan creates, you know, is, is the first step in creating more spaces for all the wonderful things that happen downtown. But it's a very progressive thing to do. And it fits well with our ideological and cultural commitment to pedestrian cycling mobility and safety. And because of that, I vote yes.
Hey. Thank you, everyone. And now, as, as so many of you said, the work really begins. There'll be a lot of work, but this is going to be fabulous for our town. All right, it's ten, it's after ten o'clock, so I have to ask the council to vote to continue going. We have a lot more to cover here now, so all in favor of extending the meeting beyond ten o'clock, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we get a break?
Yeah.
How do you break?
Break if we're going to be
Okay.
More than a half an hour or more.
Okay, let's take a ten minute break, five minute break, what do you want?
Ten's fine.
She wants five, you want ten, okay. Ten, okay.
So I will see everybody at ten twelve.
Correct.
You look so lonely, Matt. You're muted. You're muted.
I'm feeling lonely at Borough Hall. I, I, I wish, I wish this big crowd were here with us.
I just needed a break because I didn't eat dinner. I like got home from work and immediately ordered dinner for my family and here I am.
I know, I have, I have some, I have some food too.
So that's why I'm not on camera because I'm chewing very quickly.
This is cool, a lot of good feedback.
Just, it was, uh, it'll, we have a lot of people who are passionate in town who, you know, shared their opinions. And that's one of the things I always loved about our town.
People care, that's important. Get a lot done when that happens.
Yes, you do.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute out briefly.
Yeah, I am too, I'm gonna.
I am too.
Stick around, everybody who's still here, meeting will continue in eight minutes.
Terry, here's a picture of the baby, if you can see it. You're muted, but that's him.
That looks like a pretty cute baby to me, Tara, congratulations.
Thank you, he was so big.
Oh, really?
Nine eleven and twenty-three inches long.
Wow.
Which is probably why my daughter was in labor for three days because she just couldn't deliver him, she's small.
Holy moly.
Yeah, her pelvis sort of exploded.
Okay, I think we're ready.
It's ten thirteen, mayor.
Okay. Give me a time.
Do you know where your children are?
Mine's asleep.
Okay, so Terry asked a question, I think we can let Joe and Jim be excused from the rest of the meeting. I don't think there'll be anything that comes up that we would need to call on you to answer. So thank you both very much for being here and for your sage advice.
You're welcome, and I feel a little slightly guilty about leaving you, but not so much that I'm gonna stay.
Thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you both.
Can I let the chief go, mayor, can I let the chief go as well?
Yeah, as long as there's nothing on the agenda that concerns the police department, I don't think it.
Capitol ordinance intro, but there'll be a public hearing on that, mayor, so.
Okay. And LC should be able to answer those questions. Okay. All right, is everybody back? Do I have everybody? Yes, okay. All right, then we're gonna move on. Joan, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, clerk, can you please report on advertising the Renewable Government Energy Aggregation Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter eighty-four, Establishment of a Government Energy Aggregation Program was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits, a publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
All right, any public hearing on this? Oh, Terry, you're raising your hand.
Yes, I need to interject before we go into public hearing. There was a item on, in the ordinance that there was a kind of administrative clarification I'd like to make on the ordinance. I, I talked with the borough attorney, I talked to Council President George. Both have agreed it's non-substantiated and we can proceed with the public hearing and the vote, but I'd like to just articulate what was brought to my attention and, and for the better, so the council's aware. We have a whereas clause, the last whereas clause, that basically models after the Sustainable Jersey action that we're going to try to achieve a minimum of ten percent above the prevailing New Jersey renewable energy portfolio standard, meaning we want to not just beat the going energy companies rate by one percent, we want to beat it by a minimum of ten percent, hopefully more depending on where, where the market conditions are. We, we, meaning the, the Public Works Committee, as well as in, in discussions of this ordinance, had agreed to that language, it got built into the last whereas clause in the amendment. However, it did not get translated into the Program Operations Section eighty-four dash three component of the ordinance, which was everybody's intention from the beginning. It was just an oversight in part because we, we, we did the, the amendment in-house and I, I, it just didn't translate. So we would also like to add that same language into Section eighty-four three C. And the borough attorney's already drafted something I can share with the borough clerk. So before the ordinance is finalized, that would be incorporated. Ed, did I get that right?
Yes, you got it right. The language has been in there and we just repeated the whereas in the body of the ordinance. So if the council's interested in adopting it this evening, you would do so as amended and we'll publish that this week.
So then they will be voting on adopting the ordinance as amended by Terry. Correct?
Correct, but Terry just put on the record, will be a part of the record this evening. And the, and the ordinance has already been amended or revised to show that. So there would be a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Okay. Very good. In that case, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance as amended on final reading by title?
A move. A move.
Okay, any public hearing?
And again, it's a star nine or the raise hand button on, on Zoom. Looks like we have one hand mayor, Charlie Cravatil.
Okay.
Or Cradaville, excuse me, I always reverse that.
Not a problem, good to be with you all, can you hear me?
Yes, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie Cradaville, I'm the Central Jersey Organizer with Food and Water Watch. And I do want to express that we're disappointed with the language in this ordinance and with the utmost respect, ask you to hold. And, yeah, somebody could make a motion to amend, just like what you just did there. So while there is a passing reference to a goal of one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty in the whereas clauses of the ordinance, we all know that the whereas clauses are just words and the part of the ordinance that actually has the force of law unless you just change. the part of the ordinance that actually has the force of law, unless you just changed it, requires a standard, based on a state standard, ten percent more than the state standard, which would get you to about sixty percent renewable energy by 2030. And so, you know, this law, while it might be a slight improvement on your current aggregation ordinance, it would still be the weakest of any of these types of ordinances anywhere in Middlesex County. I'll just list the towns that in the past two years have made a commitment in the Be It Ordained section of their ordinances to get to one hundred percent renewable energy by 2030. That's Edison, East Brunswick, North Brunswick, South Brunswick, and Woodbridge here in Middlesex County in the past two years, and then outside the county, you've got places like Asbury Park, Long Branch, and Collingswood, and the voters in T-Neck will be deciding on whether or not to adopt just such an ordinance this year as well. So, and again, I ask with the utmost respect and really do appreciate all the dialogue that has taken place thus far, and, 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 you know, having the ability to have these conversations with you and work with Sustainable Highland Park and others on this. Why isn't Highland Park able to make that same commitment to a hundred percent renewable by 2030? And will any member of this council be open to making a motion to amend, to restore that language to, to the ordinance?
So I'm going to ask Council President Phil George, who is the council's liaison to our Public Works and Sustainability Committees. Councilman George, what do you say?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cradaville, as you know, we have, this was proposed through Sustainable Highland Sustainable Highland Park quite some time ago, and underwent a number of discussions back and forth, the same at the Public Works Committee, which recommends, recommended the ordinance for action by the council, and it was, felt that a compromise was appropriate based upon the relative concerns about whether one hundred percent sustainability could be reached by 2030, number one, and number two, its impact upon residents, residents who rent, who have passed, passed through utility costs in their rent, senior citizens who are on fixed income, and we have senior citizens who are relatively well off, but they are on fixed income, and given the nature of the program, this was the compromise that the residents of Highland Park proposed, and that is the version that's proposed. We felt that the ten percent which matched the state's recommendation was appropriate at this time, and this ordinance has been revisited several times already and could be revisited when market conditions look like they're more favorable to make it a workable proposition.
Terry, did you want to add anything to that? I know you were working with Council President Phil George on this.
No, I think, I think Council President George covered it. I think it was that tension between potential costs. I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that prohibits us from achieving those goals. You know, we're just establishing a minimum that meets the Sustainable Jersey's kind of threshold baseline for getting points, and we're, you know, we're very active in the program, and that's important to us. But also, so I don't think we're precluded from doing that, and I know that there's an interest in getting as much renewable as possible, and that's what we, we also tried to do in our, we've already gone to the market with this. Unfortunately, we weren't able to award a contract because the conditions weren't good for us at that time. So I think, I think, and I did confirm with Sustainable before the meeting that they were still comfortable moving ahead, and that was confirmed as well.
All right, well, then let's also make a commitment to keep our eyes on this ordinance as we move forward in any opportunities that open up that would allow us to show a greater commitment. All right, then. Is there any other public hearing, Terry?
Let me see, I do not see any other hands raised at this time, Mayor.
All right, then may I, may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise this ordinance on final reading by, by title? Anybody?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Elsie, you need to unmute.
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
I agree that getting to a hundred percent renewable by 2030 is imperative, and I know that it's a goal of several of the council members up here, but for now, I'll follow the recommendation of Sustainable Highland Park, yes, but let's keep an eye.
All right, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the Water Meter Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending Chapter three twenty-eight concerning municipal water meters of the code of the Borough of Highland Park, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits, a publication or a file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title? Any public hearing?
You need a second.
Second.
Sorry about that. Yes, any public hearing? Any hands raised?
No, Mayor, sorry, myself was a little distracted. Yeah, there are no, I see no hands raised on this night.
All right, then may I have a resolution to adopt and reject, or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just briefly, what this does is it incorporates one-inch meters into our borough own meters as we go through the replacement program and the modernization program of our infrastructure. We felt it was necessary to incorporate the one-inch meters, which should bring in pretty much all of our residential and some of the commercial space. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
All right, may I have a resolution to amend the 2021 capital budget?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
All right, we're now gonna move on to ordinance, ordinances requiring a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of the Accessible Parking Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending on-street parking regulations for residences occupied by persons with disabilities and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Do I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on introduction of an ordinance for the purchase of twenty-three South Third Avenue for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, authorizing the Borough to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with David Towel and Yehudah Towel to acquire Block three thousand one, Lot seven on the tax map, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Matt, you have to unmute. I don't think we heard you.
Sorry, yeah.
Clerk, can you please report on introduction of Capitol ordinance providing for the installation of emergency radio console and portable radios for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Capitol ordinance providing for purchase and installation of emergency radio consoles and portable radios appropriating two hundred fifty thousand dollars, therefore authorized by the Borough of Highland Park, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt the starred items numbers fifteen A through fifteen S?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, I, I need to motion, motion to table fifteen H.
Fifteen H.
It's the resolution to apply for grant from Middlesex County for Highland Park Historical Studies, and, sorry, we, Terry, do you want to?
Sure, it's, it's basically, there, there's been a slight change in the proposed budget for the project that I believe Councilmember Hirsch wanted to bring to his committee before council votes on it. So we, we've confirmed we can do so and still apply for the grant, so we'll, we'll bring it back on October fifth.
All right, then may I have a new motion to accept con, consent agenda items fifteen A through fifteen G, and then fifteen I through fifteen S? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
This yes is for Jason Postle, congratulations for joining the Housing Authority, Jason. Looking forward to seeing you, not in Trenton, but here in Helen.
Okay. We now have a resolution, I need, I need a motion to accept a resolution requiring the separate reading of Chapter one fifty-nine, County of Middlesex Information and Assistance Grant.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, I'm now appointing Eric Gonzalez to the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, and two new members to the Fire Department, Montgomery Draper and Jose Solis, to, both to the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Go ahead.
May I have, may I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
So, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
You're muted.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Mayor, may I interrupt to add just one thing while we're on volunteers, and I apologize. I just wanted to note some volunteers, which really didn't fall under my council report, but it does fall under volunteers. Everyone knows the outstanding efforts that are our, our flying squad who booked everybody for COVID nineteen shots in the spring are probably now going to have to reorganize for the booster shots. I made a donation in their name of a monthly donation to the food pantry, which is what they chose, and I just want to read their names. Abby Stern Cardinal, Grace Tian, Nayla Caruso, Ally Palmer, Laura Christiansen, Rob Scott, Amanda Potter, Tamagina Hazra, Rose and Mark Tripodi de Lorenzo, Jenny Chapman, and Rebecca Hirsch. There'll be a formal letter, but it didn't catch up with you, unfortunately, by tonight. I just wanted to recognize all them. They chose, I asked them, what monthly donation would they all like, and they chose the food pantry, so making a monthly donation to the food pantry in their name.
Thank you, President George. Okay, we're now up to the second public participation session. This is three minutes per person on any item that, well, believe it or not, it's supposed to have ended at nine P M. So I'm going to ask that we be sure to end it by ten minutes to eleven, so that we can do the last part of our agenda, be done by eleven. So if you have anything you would like to ask or speak to in this session, please raise your hand by pressing star nine, which is on your phone keypad, or select the raise hand button on the Zoom application. Borough Administrator will announce your, your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine, or, and I'm sorry, any topic on this portion, please press, press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, Mayor, I do see a hand raised. Diehard here, Dan Stern Cardinal. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, I know it's late. I just want to, real quick comment, I want to thank you all for your work, not just on the redevelopment plan, but also on last month with the cannabis ordinance, and though, I don't think it's been voted on officially yet, but, you know, prior to the pandemic, there was the, the walking and cycling plan, and, you know, all this stuff kind of go, people, you know, we kind of have fights about them as a town, kind of in a vacuum, but this stuff all goes together, right, to improve the vibrancy and the economic health of the town, making it more sustainable. And as the mayor talked about earlier in the evening, safer by designing around pedestrians and cyclists rather than cars. You know, roads for cars rather than people is a choice, and it's, but it's not the default, and it shouldn't be the default. We, we can and should choose to do things differently, and that's what we're doing with this combination, the master plan, the redevelopment plan, and the pedestrian and cycling plan. And I also just want to thank all of you for avoiding the extremely common pitfall of like endless meetings and studies. You know, at some point, you have to make a decision about what's best for the town, and you all deserve credit for doing that, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Dan. We appreciate your support.
Okay, at this point, I'm assuming there are no other hands?
You are correct, Mayor.
Okay, at this point, we would go into a five-minute recess, but let's move ahead. There is only one item on the work session agenda, and that is the League of Municipalities Conference, Joan Hollings. Do you have something to share with the council?
Well, what I need to know is who on the council needs hotel reservations? You need to let me know by the end of this week, because I've made hotel accommodations for all the council. It's easier to cancel them than it is to get them, and then I need to know who will require badges to attend the actual conference, so that I can apply for the early registration, so we get a discount.
I need neither, Joan. I'm going for work.
You told me that already, Matt, so you're good.
Okay.
All right, so everyone else, please be sure to get back to Joan by the end of this week. Tara, I don't know if you were on council before, when we had. Tara, I don't know if you were on council before when we had a league event?
I did it virtually last year and I did get back to Joan and tell her that I was going this year.
Okay, good. I was going to suggest that for you. Okay. There's no need for an executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye from the person who's asleep.
Okay, everybody, really good work. Really good.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night. Be safe.
Matt Hale?